It's May 4th, 2022. The time is 4:05 PM. Welcome, everybody. We've got a full agenda. In attendance today, Board Directors, Director Art, Director Daniels, Director Nelson, Director Mal Pakem, Director Jerkensen, and Director Loma. Director Bankus is on excused absence today. For the first topic on the agenda, we have with us the Executive Director from Urban Renewal Authority, Mr. Jeriah Walker. And introduce your...
Yep, yep. I've got David Neville here with me as well. He's the counsel to the Colorado Springs Urban Renewal Authority and the author of all of our legal documents.
Yeah. And just to provide some context, and I'm sure Jeriah will provide a little bit more better wording than what I'm going to do. But the Urban Renewal Authority identifies blighted area in our community for restoration and redevelopment. Downtown Colorado Springs is a prime example of that. When you look at it now compared to what it was 10 to 15 years back, you see the soccer stadium, is it the Whitner Field?
Whitner Field.
The Whitner Field, the Olympic Museum, the new hotels that are developing, some of the apartment buildings, all examples that were blighted areas that have been developed over the past few years. And when some of these urban renewal areas fall within our school district boundaries, then we, as a school district, being a taxing entity, have the unique opportunity to partner with different local entities to help revive our community. And we go through that through a tax increment financing agreement called TIF. We have one such resolution coming in front of the board next week as a non-action item, since we have several new board members. I invited Jeriah to provide a brief overview on this topic to the board. With that, I'll turn it over to you.
Which one of those would you like?
The... The... Yeah, the last one, by the arrow markers.
The TIF?
Yeah, the TIF PDF.
Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, right?
Would you like me to help you advance slides?
You want me to stand up there and advance them? I can do that.
It's one of your preferences.
Yeah, I can do that. That's no problem. That's no problem. Full screen mode on that.
It's PDF.
Oh, it's PDF. Got it.
Yeah.
It's okay.
We just have to go...
That's okay. Yeah, we can do that. No problem. No problem at all. Okay, everyone, I think Part did a great job of setting that up for us. Again, just so you know, if there's ever any questions with any of this stuff, my cell phone number's up there, my email's up there. I love coffees or just sitting down one-on-one. So if there's ever, you know, for anyone in the room, it's like, hey, that was great, but I'd love to dive into this one subject a little bit more. Please, you know, feel free to reach out. I love doing that stuff. And the topic is not an easy topic. It's one of those things that's, they say it's easy to learn, difficult to master, right? There's a whole lot of, a whole lot of space. I'd just like to give a little bit of credit to Downtown Colorado Inc. They're really the individuals who put a lot of this presentation together, and it's an organization that the URA is part of. And really, the focus of what we do is we go around all areas of the state, different communities, help them form DDAs, URA's, business improvement districts, and really kind of teach communities how they can get some great projects out of the ground. So in recognition of them putting together this slide, I wanted to, I wanted to give them a little bit of a shout out. And then, of course, a lot of the sponsors we work with, with Downtown Colorado Inc. as well. So tax increment finance, it's a financing mechanism that helps really encourage development projects throughout the community. TIF is one of those things where it used to be that we were able to just go to city council if the URA board deemed an area blighted, going through the appropriate processes, and then it would, they would make it a URA. But with House School 1348, which really came to life in January of 2016, we now have to go out to the taxing entities and make sure that they support these projects before they pledge TIF into them. This is just a slide about how we structure our agreements. Really, we have a development project that puts in an activity request, formal application, and these are some steps we go through that ultimately come to the fruition of creating a URA. And of course, really, this last section, the sales tax and cooperation agreement, that's what, that's the stage that we're in now with our Whitner project, for instance, where we'll be coming out to the districts and asking them for their support and pledge into the project. There we go. So we've got partners in development here, county assessor, county consultants, developers, school district, of course, municipality. These are all the people that we work with on all of our projects to make sure that they get going. So it's, it's not just a URA effort. I always tell all the taxing entities, we're all in this together, and it truly is a community project. In your packet, this is super small, and I knew it would be super small on the slide deck, but I wanted to make sure you had a separate map so you could actually see all the different URAs that we have within the city. They're all highlighted there, and they're a little bit detailed, labeled in the bottom area. Long story short, we have 14 of them, okay? On the left side, we've, I listed up some coming soon projects that are really going to be coming in front of D11. How you doing, sir? That are going to be coming online and in front of you sooner rather than later. So we've got the City Gate Whitner URA project, and a unique one because it's already a URA. That one's actually going through a process where it was created, nothing ever came of it. We had private capital finally get interested in it, so now we can, we need to restart that clock and do a fresh one on that area. So that one will be coming forward soon. Gold Hill Commercial, another one like that. That's an existing URA that was created before in 2015. Again, nothing happened with that. The Gold Hill Residential Project occurred, but the Gold Hill Commercial didn't, just with timing, with COVID, et cetera. So that one will be coming online soon, so that's an existing URA. So not really adding so much to new URAs, but really just kind of doing new clocks. The Park Union URA, you'll know that today is the Museum of Park URA. So that's really the one that's along the Olympic Museum. Again, COVID hasn't been able to get going over the last few years. That one, we actually started in 2018, and that one is, the master developer for that project is Norwood Development. And then we've got the O'Neill Towers. That has been in, you don't hear about them so much lately, but that was in the papers for a while, but two high-rise towers in the downtown core, really with bringing in some Class A office, commercial space, and some residential or crown-level retail. That one is a little bit on the back burner for now, but I would imagine is going to be coming in front of this body probably, you know, maybe eight months, 10 months, somewhere in that timeframe. But just wanted to give you a little snapshot of what can come down the pipeline soon. Sometimes when we talk about TIF, some people confuse URAs with DDAs. We do have a Downtown Development Authority here in Colorado Springs. They can issue TIF as well. My counterpart there is Susan Edinson, whom I'm sure many of you know. URA and a DDA can occupy the same space, so even though we've got URA projects downtown, we have agreements with them that we're the only ones that will be collecting tax increment on that project. But just because TIF is used with both entities, I think it's a nice educational slide to remind people that it can be used with both. This, this graph is one I like to show because it really shows what a project can look like with TIF when TIF is present and shooting for the stars, and what it might look like if it just, if it's potential organic growth. That base value, okay, is, is an important topic, and some people understand this and some people don't. This is super old hat to Glenn for sure. But the, when we, when we look at a project, the base stays the same, right? So that, we're not going to take the increment from the base that's going to keep flowing to the taxing entities. Really, when we come in front of you, we're asking for those net new dollars that are built on the project to be pledged back into it to go to some public improvements, and I'll get into that a little bit later. But the main purpose I want to get out of this slide is that when we do a TIF project, we hold these projects to pretty high standards. So, you know, if you, if you think of the Marriott that's going in downtown, it used to be the Aldermark Hotel that's on the corner of Tejon and Costilla, the southwest corner. Been in the paper a little bit lately with a cool restaurant that's going to be opening on the top, a rooftop restaurant, and it's going to be a beautiful project. Great example. So let's say that was going to turn into just like a come and go, okay? Then we're probably looking at more of this potential organic growth line that it's, it's going to be okay. It's going to generate decent property taxes, but it's not going to generate as much as this hotel would with these, with these restaurants and kind of this, this sense of wanting people to spend money there and draw a lot more dollars to it. So when we look at these projects, our goal is always to maximize that TIF and to get as much out of them as possible. So when they roll off that 25-year TIF clock, really, that, in theory, would roll to the taxing entities. Now, school district is a little different. We'll get to that later. But I just want to show you an example of a slide of what, of what the tax revenue we're trying to generate looks like. So once we get TIF coming in the door, then the question is, okay, well, what do you do with it? And typically, we have to do a bond or some sort of a loan in order to be able to get the deal done. That developer's coming up with a lot of cash out of pocket to, to get the project going in place, but we, we need, we need more money now to get it built. And then those bonds and loans are really paid with that increment that comes in on an annual basis. Some people think that we can just kind of take that every single year and be able to make it work, but we, we've got to finance it in order to make the projects happen. So we talk about eligible costs. This is a slide I like to show people too because it really shows what are these dollars going to. So technically, the state statute says the TIF dollars can go to anything. Vertical development could go to, you know, anything with that project whatsoever. We like to look at it, and this community has tended to really want to see public infrastructure as something that these dollars go to. So parking, abatement, carbon gutter, affordable housing. This body approved an affordable housing, an affordable housing project through Toby Gannett. That's currently on hold right now. I'll get into that later as well. But these are all areas that we look at for eligible costs. Public art, another one as well. And when we, when we look at URAs, blight is really the name of the game. We want to, we want to fight blight, want to create great projects, and these are some of the factors that come out of that. Job creation, economic development, and increased tax revenue. The, the thing I want to bring up with that increased tax revenue is a lot of taxing entities will say, okay, well, we're pledging into this project, but we're not going to see into that increased tax revenue for 25 years. And fair. But we, when we look at the circle around these projects, all the different things that come into play now that the URA is in place, you'll often see commercial development chase rooftops. So when we do an apartment project, you'll see new commercial come in. That's property taxes that benefits, and sales tax for that matter, that benefits the taxing districts. We want ripple effects with these projects. We want to catalyze an area, get something going so more things come online, so more dollars are generated for the entire community. I don't think I have to get too much into this. This is kind of what, a slide just about what I was saying before, but kind of the cycle of when we look at projects. So it's coming up with a project, how that increment works, feeding back into the URA, and then ultimately back into the project to get these public improvements built. This is a slide similar to the, to the, to the graph I'd shown below, but really just showing an example of what type of tax generation can occur if we're pledging TIF to a project for something that's bigger and bolder, where if it's, if it's more plain Jane, it's going to be more of a steady rise, but not quite as, as bold as that top graph would be. And really, that graph particularly matters to the library district, to the county, et cetera, because they're pledging all of their property tax with no backfill mechanism like a school district is blessed to have. And so with that, they care about this slide because they want to know what's coming in 25 years since they're pledging their money because, in terms, you call that a windfall, right? They're investing in an area, they're hoping new growth comes in around it that they get sooner. And in turn, once this project matures, they want to see a decent-sized revenue come in beyond what was there existing before. With the school district, of course, there's a backfill mechanism, so through the School Finance Act. So the school district really doesn't lose per se during that timeframe, but they're not really going to get a windfall either when that timeframe is up. Really, with the school districts, what we're looking for is we're looking, especially on residential projects, we're looking for new students, right? So do we have families moving in that have got a student that are going to go into D11? There's a revenue mechanism for that. Are we generating new property tax dollars that are being built around our urban renewal areas? The school district would obviously benefit from that. Those are things that we're looking at. Even on apartments where you've got, you know, maybe it's not so much a family environment, but you've got maybe younger people that are moving there. We want to get people hooked on our urban core. You know, we want people that, even if they're in an apartment, that like, you know, I want to buy a house around here. I really love it downtown. I love this area, and ultimately be a feeder for more kids into the school district. And this is just a shot, just on, on the math on that project, of just what it can look like on a TIF-supported project versus a non-TIF-supported project. So that was super, super quick, but I wanted to, I wanted to get through it quick because I know you guys have got a big agenda. TIF is, like I said, it's a very simple concept. There's really nothing that difficult with it. But the, the benefits and the mechanisms with it can get quite complicated once you get into the details. So with that being said, I'm happy to take any questions. You know, I'll, I'll push it to Part Two if you want to leave a discussion on that, too.
So thank you. Thank you, Jeriah.
You're welcome. Absolutely.
So to let the board know, I serve on the Urban Renewal Authority Board. That was one of the things that came in front of our school board, and as a D11 representative, I do serve on that board, and I've attended two or three meetings so far. I'm not sure. I've lost track. We meet once a month on Wednesdays. The same days that we have our board meetings just before hours. So with that, questions for Jeriah? And next week, he's coming with a specific project, City Gate, right?
Yes.
Okay. And he's asking a resolution where, what he talked about, the increased taxes that are going to be generated, we pledge to the URA.
Yep. And the hope with that project, again, is that we'll get some students that are coming into it, but really invigorate that area, get more property tax generation. I, I see that, especially the Mill Street neighborhood, I see property taxes probably increasing in that. I think all the taxing districts are going to benefit from that. But that project in particular, getting more residents in the downtown core, is going to bring a lot of, a lot of commercial development with it and things that fall without, you know, from the outside of the URA boundary.
And as Jeriah said, we have a backfill mechanism, frankly. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, mostly. So the, the School Finance Act provides, whatever we don't collect in property taxes for the general fund, the state backfills, the state equates it. So the general fund, which is the biggest mill levy of all, is completely backfilled. There is a sliver of hesitation, Jeriah and I were exchanging emails, that if the state chose not to backfill, that would be devastating for the district. I mean, you know, millions and millions of dollars. But we already have, you know, more than a dozen TIFs in our boundary. And when you look across the state with Denver, Denver has gobs of them. I don't even know how many they have. You know, the biggest example is the one up by Loveland with the malls, the outlet malls. For the state to do that would just devastate K-12 education. So I don't really see that happening. I view that as very unlikely. And eventually, we'll get, I thought Jeriah really characterized it well. We'll get past this 25-year window where we don't have much growth coming in, and then it'll be just kind of a rolling, replenishing kind of cycle. The big but is we don't get any backfill on our bond fund. That doesn't really matter because we're going to pay off our bonds on December 1 of '22. So that's really irrelevant at this point. Everything we have is in motion to collect all that money. That levy is already been levied, so that's not a matter. But we won't get any backfill on our mill levy override, and that's a big deal. We do have a fairly significant mill levy override, mill levy. But our mill levy is capped in dollars, so it's not necessarily an impact on the district's financial situation. It's an impact on every one of us that pay property taxes in Colorado that they won't be looted by the effect of that development for 25 years. So with that, we generally like to squeeze to get a few perks out of that. We generally, like the Downtown Development Authority, we asked, we told them about the bond and mill levy. I know DDAs are different, but they're similar. And they actually write us a check every month, every year. I don't think that's really feasible for the URA, but like the Olympic Hall of Fame Museum URA, they promised us passes for students. And we once had a computer technology company promise us computers for students. So maybe there's something in this URA that you can help our students with. That's what we would really like as, because what you're doing is really being good neighbors, good citizens, promoting economic development in our community. But it would be nice to have something to help the 11 students.
Absolutely. And Laura Newman and Greg Cervana, we're going to talk about this a little bit next week as well. But I'll, I'll preface this. The, any learning opportunities that can be done with, with just kids want to learn how a project gets developed, or a lot of the great stories with some of the public art that we've got going on in this area, they are more than willing, you know, to, to be able to reach out and, and have any of these programs come forward. They're also, they announced at the County Commissioner meeting, their work session meeting a few weeks back, but they're actually working with UCCS to create a local real estate program as well through the college, which is fantastic and something that, something that we need here in this community. I'm actually kind of surprised we don't have it. And so I think there could be a great, a great way for students to get involved with that aspect of it, too, which could be exciting.
Glenn, can you also, I wasn't here, but can you talk about the past? Because this is not the first time our board has adopted such a resolution. And I believe when we were going back, looking into the past, this is something that really went to action for the board. It didn't have to go through those steps, but can you talk to that a little bit? So that the board can know, because I, I don't know how many people were on the board at that time when, when we did pass this resolution as a board.
Thank you, Dr. Pledge. So yes, you know, that was probably a slip of my memory, too, is I, I had scheduled, before this work session was even scheduled, I, I was worried about the newness of the board not knowing about URAs and how, and TIFs and how they affected the district. So I scheduled it for non-action, action. But now that President Mal Pakem has had the work session and you're kind of up to speed on it. Normally, these types of agreements, we just take as a contract award, which means they go straight to action. So our preference would be to just move it to action on the 11th and not have it go non-action on the 11th and, and action on the 25th. Chris did one while I was out over the last nine months, and that one just went straight to action. So it's generally not very controversial. Of course, you could still discuss it and, and take comment on, on the action agenda. But I think now that you've gotten the full presentation from your, I think, Jeriah, I think maybe it would be most efficient use of your time is just to take it straight to action as a contract award on the 11th, which is really how I should have set it up in the first place.
Thank you, Glenn.
Okay. Any further questions to Jeriah?
And if anyone does, that, you know, phone numbers in there, email, please, feel free to reach out.
The board, just by a collective thumbs up, are you guys okay to move it to action next week? Okay?
So Glenn will work with...
We got it. So next week, you're going to come and make a brief presentation on the City Gate, and then we can have a discussion on it.
Yep. Yep, we'll have the developer here present, too, and they'll, the developer will actually probably do most of that presentation because most of what I do is just around the mechanism. But, but we'll be here for questions as well, should the board have any.
Who, who is the developer?
The developer's Whitner. Dean Whitner is the developer. He actually is, this is interesting. He is the member of the first graduating class of Lawson High School and actually went to high school, graduated with David Jenkins of Norwood, which is kind of a unique story. But they've been making an extensive investment in this community, and frankly, a lot of these projects wouldn't happen without great people.
Perfect. Thank you, Jeriah, for giving the time and being with us. And we ended perfectly on time, too, for that.
I wanted to go quick, so I appreciate that.
You are great. You are great. Thank you. We'll see you next week.
All right. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on. The next item on the agenda is special programs, and we have three different presentations here. Special education, gifted and talented, and culturally and linguistically diverse education program. All new topics. So I'll turn it over to your Dr. Pledge for the second setting it up, and...
Yes, sir. And without delay, I'll turn it right over to Sheri Paulback.
Okay.
And I believe all of the documents were contained in the, in the board docs for your review prior to today's meeting. So Sheri, it's all yours, and thank you.
I appreciate the time this afternoon. I have three great members of my team here with you who are going to give you some up-to-date information on the ways that we support our students with IEPs through our special education program, our students who qualify for gifted and talented services, and CLDE, which may be a new acronym for some of us. We may be used to ESL or ELL. CLDE, and Nicole will correct me, culturally and linguistically diverse education. I have to slow down when I say that or inane words. So they are happy to answer questions that you have. We'll pause between each of our three presentations so that they can engage with you and answer your questions. And without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Judy Goodbagen, who is our Executive Director of Special Education.
Good afternoon. We're members of Dr. Pledge. Thank you for this opportunity to, for me to report to you on special education in District 11. This is the end of my third year in D11, and I'm prouder than ever to serve here. We're doing great things in our department despite the disruptions of the past two years. We continue to press forward with our continued goal of supporting staff, who then continue to improve outcomes for our students. As you'll see in the coming slides, we have many things to celebrate this year along with the work still before us. And I've actually got a clicker, so you can sit down.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Sheri.
To get us started, I'd like to share a bit about our practices related to the law. As you know, just about everything we do in special ed is guided by a multitude of laws, policies, and guidance in place at both the federal and state level. The Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, or IDEA, is the overarching law for our work, while the Exceptional Children's Education Act, or ECEA, rules at the state level, providing greater clarification of federal law. And then ongoing case law further refines our practice in real time, and we adjust our own guidance frequently as our understanding of all these things together evolves and expands. In the Pikes Peak region, I'm lucky to be able to collaborate with about nine other special ed directors on a frequent basis. This helps us deepen our understanding of the law and work together for consistent practices across the region whenever possible. The model we use to determine allocations includes overall school numbers and caseload sizes. It also takes school mobility factor into consideration to ensure appropriate staffing that offsets any additional burden for schools with high student turnover. Outside of the formula, we account for unique building needs in determining final allocations by collaborating with building administration and special ed teams. We hold a small amount of educational assistant positions in reserve for situations that may arise, things like students with high needs enrolling mid-year or caseload sizes that soar unexpectedly at a particular school. Most of our department's allocation goes directly to schools in order to keep staff-to-student ratio as low as possible. You can see on the slide that our average caseload sizes are reasonable, and they haven't changed much in the past many years. Overall staffing allocations to schools have remained fairly consistent over time as well, except for some of the staffing shortages at some schools for some or all of the year. According to our December count 2021, District 11 currently has 2,685 students on IEPs, and that's from preschool through age 21. This is six students more than we had the previous year. We saw a loss of approximately 100 students during the worst part of the pandemic. But aside from 2020, our numbers have been growing a small amount, but steadily from year to year. The disability percentages you see on the left side of the slide are fairly common across school districts. IDEA identifies 13 disability categories. The other category you see listed there includes the very low incidence disability categories, including things like deaf-blind, hearing impairment, and vision impairment. About 80% of identified students have milder disabilities, such as specific learning disability or speech and language impairment. And then less than 1% of our students on IEPs qualifies having a cognitive disability. And these are the students who qualify to access modified or alternate standards and assessments. On the right side of the slide, you'll see that nearly half of our staff is made up of educational assistants. And as we know, this group is essential to supporting our students in inclusive settings. All of our neighborhood schools have resources designed to provide a continuum of supports and services for their own students. Each school has one or more special education teachers, depending on how they're allocated, a speech pathologist, a mental health provider, and EA support. And then additionally, we have itinerant staff who cover multiple schools for services such as occupational and physical therapy, assistive technology... such as occupational and physical therapy, assistive technology, instructional coaching, and behavior intervention. Our cluster support model, we call it, quickly activates resources to needed schools. Each comprehensive high school with its feeder schools represents one cluster. Each cluster consists of a support team made up of one facilitator, an instructional coach, two behavior interventionists, and a variety of assessment psychologists, plus others as necessary. Team members assist in developing student plans, supporting teachers, assessing and observing students, and generally responding to complicated student situations. While not building-based, these employees spend almost all of their time directly supporting schools. In our preschool programs, we serve more than 1,300 preschool students across 30 of our elementary schools. Preschool programming is available for free to three- and four-year-olds who either have state-identified risk factors or who qualify for special education services. Survey data, our survey data shows that our preschool families view District 11 preschool very favorably. Our families recognize and value the high quality of our programming. They love their preschool teachers, and they appreciate being connected to their own neighborhood school. On the chart you see here, D11 preschools get high marks in all of those areas. It's pretty tiny print, but hopefully you can see it on your screen. This year, preschool enrollment recovered from a dip resulting from the pandemic. We tend to have several hundred students each year that are unable to place due to program capacity, including space and staff. And then beginning in the 2023-24 school year, Universal Preschool, who means UPK, will be available to all families. This means that all children in their year just prior to kindergarten will be eligible for free part-day preschool. When this change goes into effect, we'll have more students who qualify for preschool. We can't yet predict what impact this will have on our annual rate list, because either one, as the research seen on the slide, indicates families are overwhelmingly prioritizing highly-trained teachers and school district programs over other types of placements, which could create increase in enrollment for us. Or two, families will now have more choices in the community for where to send their child for free preschool, which could cause a decline in enrollment. We're just not sure what that looks like quite yet. Transition programming is available for students with IEPs who have completed their credits for graduation but still have needs related to preparation for the adult world. As you can see, enrollment in our 18 to 21 transition program is steadily rising from year to year. Our program in collaboration with our general education partners offers increasingly attractive opportunities for students with IEPs. We currently have a partnership with our Career and Technical Education Department and Blue Star Recyclers, who's a business here in the community, where we have students placed for skill building in the field of electronic recycling. Career pathways through Odyssey Echo has supported an increasing number of students with IEPs in their program over the past four years. Approximately 20 students will be enrolled next year in various pathway programs, which offer Pike's Peak Community College credit, industry certifications, and they often result in employment. Students also have the option of participating in classes at Tesla Professional Development Center, and those classes are designed to increase vocational readiness and independent living skills through a mix of classroom and community-based instruction. And finally, we place some of our transition students, fewer all the time, in community programs where they engage in a variety of options, such as non-paid work experience, job coaching, day programming, and learning to navigate the community independently. Community day programs work for some of our students, but we believe we can serve most of our students better with the resources we have in place and our ability to be responsive to student interest areas. This past year has been a good one for our department, as evaluated by CDE and all of our K-12 compliance indicators. The first main area is our graduation rate. The four-year rate for students with IEPs dramatically improved during the 2021 school year and exceeded the state target by over 10%, with our current rate now at nearly 90%. As you can see on this chart, we had a significant bump in that rate during this one year. One reason we're hypothesizing is that as of June 2020, school districts in Colorado can now count students who are participating in 18 to 21 transition programming as four-year graduates. Previously, even though these students had completed all of their graduation requirements, we weren't able to count them as four-year grads, and so they counted as five, six, or seven-year graduates. And that's not as highly desired in Colorado. To explain the giant increase, we believe that all students in our transition program during that one year, in years five, six, and seven, all got counted at the same time as four-year graduates. That's why you're seeing that 90% rate. But moving forward, we expect the rate to be higher than in previous years, but maybe not quite as high as this one, as this one year, because we'll still be able to count those transition students. And then one other reason for the rate increase may be that our new graduation requirements have provided our department the impetus to develop a roadmap for students with IEPs to complete their demonstrations of college and career readiness, and our special ed teachers are better equipped to help them get there. Special ed's seen a small but steady decline in dropout rates over the past five years. In 2015-16, as you can see, nearly 40% of students with IEPs were coded as dropouts. And as of last year, our dropout rate has dropped to just under 8%, outperforming the state target by almost 11 percentage points. So between our graduation rate and our dropout rate, we're doing some, some good things for students. This restrictive environment speaks to our inclusive practices for students with disabilities. What we know from research is that all students, both general education and students with IEPs, perform better when they're educated together in inclusive settings. This will continue to be an area of focus for us, but as you can see over the last four years, we've trended upward in this area, and for the past two years, we've exceeded the state target. Significant disproportionality, or DISPRO as the state likes to call it, is related to whether there is disproportionate representation by race or ethnicity that's related to inappropriate policies and practices in school districts, and they're in the following areas. Over identification for special education, including over-representation in specific disability categories; two, placement of students in particular education settings, such as much less inclusive settings or out-of-district placements; and three, a higher rate of suspensions and expulsions. D11 is not considered to be significantly disproportionate in any of the three areas tracked, and we've not once been flagged for this since CDE began tracking this data about six years ago. School districts have not received their performance reports from CDE for the past two years due to the pandemic. However, Dr. Colicky was helpful in providing some useful data regarding our district benchmark performance at the elementary and middle school levels over the past year. And you'll want to look at the data, this is really small. You'll want to look at the data on the chart labeled SWD, which is students with disabilities. I believe CLDE is also up there. Elementary students with disabilities showed a year-over-year 7% difference in math and 5% difference in English language arts from spring 2021 to spring 2022. That's seven to eight percentage points higher than math and ELA scores district-wide. That's good news for us. Middle school students, similarly, middle school students with disabilities showed a year-over-year 1.25 difference, not quite as big, in math, and 1.5 difference in ELA from spring 2021 to spring 2022. And that's about one to three percentage points higher than math and ELA scores district-wide. And then you'll see a blank there where high school students should be, and the participation rate for those students was too low to be included in this dataset. On the left side of this slide, you can see our list of new and ongoing priorities in our department. We continue to refocus our efforts based on new information, tracking of practices to determine areas of training need, and feedback we receive from our staff and parent community. The top three areas listed here will be our main priorities for the upcoming school year. Our first priority, we heard clearly from our staff about a year or two ago that one thing they need from us to stay invested and engaged in their jobs is increased professional development opportunities. We asked them what they needed, and then we prioritize those topics that will help us calibrate our practices across schools and provide clarity. Then we developed brief, frequent, and personalized virtual trainings to staff. Each of our four main topics this year was offered at least 12 different times to make it convenient for staff to attend and to make it almost impossible to say they couldn't find the time to join even once. Our training opportunities for next year, under development right now, and designed with staff retention in mind, fall into three main categories: parent relationships, staff, and students. In the parent relationships category, we're talking about how to build and maintain relationships with parents that will keep them invested in D11 and become better partners in improving student outcomes. Staff support, number two, continuing to focus on areas of training that calibrate our practices with built-in support. And three, training and supporting staff to intervene effectively with students experiencing emotional and behavioral difficulty across grade levels and settings, so they can return successfully to their learning environment. Our second big priority up there is increasing our inclusive practices across the district. We know that we're helping our students perform better academically and socially when we include them with their typical peers. And even though we're making progress in this area from year to year, it's too slow for those of us who understand the value of inclusion, so this remains an area of passion for our department. Our third priority is a new one. One request and concern that we're responding to this year, as this year comes to an end, is how we might support our schools with better calibrated support to our students with the highest behavioral needs. We're mid-process on developing a needs assessment in order to design appropriate training and guidance to specific schools that need it. Part of this support includes intentionally targeting ways to retain staff in these highest-stress positions, in addition to training and helping set up programming. Other areas of focus are below the white line. The last two years have taught us that transparent and consistent messaging helps our school team stay on track, so we've made this our norm. To that end, we include school-based administrators and communications going out to our entire special ed staff across the district. And second on that list below the line, we have created a virtual space where we house our procedures, communications, cluster support information, professional development recordings and materials, tech support, and special ed laws for easy access. We update and add to this space frequently, and now staff and district leaders know where to find this guidance. We can't say enough good things about our partnerships with our district leadership, other departments, and our schools. In D11, others often seek us out for partnership instead of the other way around. This is unusual from my experience in other school districts, and it's very welcome. And then self-directed IEPs are one of the best ways to include students in their own learning, so they understand what their goals are and how their strengths can compensate for their needs. We hope to expand this process, this practice across all schools, all of our schools in the coming years, and it was one of our four areas of main focus for PD during this past year. Moving to the other side of the slide, parents are one of our greatest resources, and we're lucky to have an active special education advisory council called SEAC, with a Mitchell High School parent as its current president. This group includes parents, community stakeholders, and staff, and meets monthly to advise the special ed department regarding important issues related to students with IEPs. This group also plans an evening educational series, providing six opportunities during the school year for community members to attend and learn about critical issues in special ed. Just recently, the group developed a new vision statement, printed up there in blue, crafted with help from students, in addition to the work of our SEAC members. This committee is always laser-focused on improving inclusive practices across the district, which you can see reflected in our new vision statement. And this year, for the first time, just a couple of days ago, SEAC issued its first annual inclusive practices award to Mitchell High School for their outstanding efforts to meaningfully include students with their typical peers, along with their efforts to prepare students for adult life with their exemplary practices, including student-led IEPs. Outside of SEAC, parents are invited to be engaged in all aspects of IEP planning and implementation. Parents participate in the IEP process, and communication between parent and case manager is open and frequent. Parents also advise special ed staff about their child's needs related to their disability. We see parents and special ed staff creating close and trusted relationships with each other, and this is where the true power lies in our department. This has been a good year for our department. We're excited about the list of priorities for the upcoming year, because we're building on current successes as opposed to correcting things that have gone wrong. As I say all the time, we do nothing alone in our department. Our many partners, many of them in this room, make us better than we would be alone. Thanks for your time. Let me know if you have questions.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that report. That was all the good things that are happening to you sharing with us and seeing how the graduation rates has increased and the dropout rates. All those are encouraging to see. So board members, questions?
Yeah, I have one.
Okay. Al.
Okay, now, they go to special ed, have any, how many transferred out into the regular population? Or do they?
How many students no longer qualify for special ed services?
They come in because they have a need. My daughter had a hearing impairment, and she came in. She was so far behind, but then she got better. They brought her to grade and put her back into the regular population.
That's, I don't have that data in front of me. I could probably find some of it. It's an interesting question with kind of a complicated answer, because some students come into special education early, early. Let's say they come in at preschool and they have a speech and language impairment, and oftentimes those impairments are corrected pretty quickly, and a student can be staffed out of special education. A true disability often means that a student is going to have that disability their entire life. So it's not always the goal to move a student out of special education, but just to ensure that we're providing them with the supports and services they need to close the gap with their peers and make the best progress they can. But we always call those huge successes. The problem is, once a student has staffed out of special education, those students are typically performing as well as their typical peers, so we don't get to count their scores in our numbers anymore. So we're always, we're always working with that population who's, you know, trying to close the gap and hasn't quite done it yet.
I would be interested to see how those students fare over the long haul, you know.
After they're staffed out of special ed?
Helped and, and then they brought back up to speed.
Yeah.
How they progressing. It just, I don't know, I think it's a good data point for us, for us to have.
I can absolutely look into that. What I will say is that it's not unheard of, but it's fairly uncommon for a student to require special ed services later, once they've been staffed out.
Right.
Do you even track them then? I mean, using that example, I wonder if you would even be tracking them 12 years later, if it were a kindergarten issue, and you gave them speech therapy? I mean, I, I'm just, I, I don't want us to accidentally, yeah, exactly. I don't want you to have to go and look up something that's gonna take you days, or even more than a few hours, or an hour. I mean.
That's a, that's a, that's a good question, and I can absolutely look into that. We don't track it currently. What we do track is students who exit with an IEP in place. And so students who graduate or exit out of our transition services, we call them a year later to find out how they're doing. Are they, do they have a job? Are they going on to college? Those are areas that we're, that we're working on with our transition students and our programming. But, good, good question. I'll jot it down.
Yeah, let us know how much work it is, because I don't think, I mean, we'd rather they were, you were doing the good work that you're doing.
If I understand what Al's request is, he's talking about the first year when they transition out of that IEP back into the general population, if you have. I don't even know if that's typical. But the first year or two, how do they, if they transition out of that IEP, would that be?
Well, there's gotta be, oh, some kind of, I think, track, because then you lose track. You don't know what they're up to, what happens.
Yeah, I have friends in other departments who can.
You're unsuccessful.
I already wrote David's name next to it.
Okay, any other questions for Ms. Yep.
You have one too? Cool. Okay, so you mentioned that you've expanded the opportunities for training, and I love that you talked to people and said, what do you need? And also, I just want to comment, I think your story, the improvements are stunning, really. That's amazing, and thank you. I'm so glad you were hired. So my question about the training, are you finding that people are taking advantage of it? Given that's what they were wanting, and then you have the opportunities.
Yes.
So much available.
Yes, one of the things we found is that maybe five people would come to a 7:00 AM training. So let's say, I did the training on writing, writing the IEP. We chose the sections of the IEP that staff said they needed the most help with. And then we would run a 7:00 AM, an 11:00 AM, and a 3:30 in the afternoon training for one hour. And so maybe five people would come. And that was good, because instead of a sit-and-get, it became a conversation, meaningful conversation. We would send out the materials later. They could follow up with questions via email or in person, and they could get the information back to their staff. And so at the, at the time, at 7:00 AM, five people. And so at the, at the time, at seven A M., five people in your WebEx doesn't feel like a lot. But after you've done it twelve times and you've gotten to a lot of people, you've had at least five people in each session, you felt like you were reaching a lot of people.
You have that small teacher-student ratio going there too.
That's right, that's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Daniels.
Yeah, thank you. I was just curious about the, I'm not sure how to phrase the question. The high schools that are getting the middle schoolers, right, have a different path in, I would say, the curriculum and the programming in high school that middle schoolers may not have been exposed to. So how does it look when the student is going to, the last four years, it's a little more rigorous, but it's also a bit of a advanced curriculum than they were exposed to in middle school? Are you seeing a lot of success with that? Are most of, I would say we have four high schools, are all of them taking on that advanced programming? Is that making sense?
It, it makes sense and I think, you know, our schools are in different places, there are different kinds of support they provide. But one of the things that we do when students are, are beginning that transition, in that year before they transition to the next level, we're, we're in conversation with the next level. So an eighth grader, the teacher might be in conversation with the, with the teacher at the high school level who's gonna be taking that student. Then typically sometime in the spring, we hold a transition meeting so that the teams can work together on what those services might look like and what the supports, uh, how the supports might need to change to, to better, to give that student what they need. We can activate supports in the general ed setting, we pull students out for different kinds of support. So the options still look similar, uh, but we're really working with teachers about how to differentiate a little better at the high school level.
Yeah, and let me make sure I ask the question maybe from this perspective. Um, middle school, they were not getting advanced placement, pre-high school, there, everybody's on it. How do you manage the conversation for the students on I E Ps five oh fours? And that transition of work, it's definitely more rigorous. But our high, our middle school did not, you know what I mean? I had conversation with the high schools, I was just curious about. It's so different. And I will, and again, all four of them, like, like you said, they're in different places, so I don't know if each school is on the same path for teaching advanced versus just one school. Is that making sense?
It does. Now, I'm recalling an earlier conversation we had where we, where the high schools have implemented something called pre-A P, which is essentially, my understanding is it's what they were doing, but I'm not the best person to talk about this, about what they were doing before, but then, but they're calling it something different. My belief is that students rise to the level of expectation. And so I think when things get more rigorous and our support to students gets more rigorous, I think students really can, can meet that mark.
Yeah.
I'm gonna jump in on the pre-A P aspect if I may. Pre-A P, so A P coursework is that advanced placement coursework that students will typically take in their junior and senior year. Pre-A P coursework is put on by the college board and is intended to really prepare those high school students for that A P level coursework. And you're right, that pre-A P for all is the way the college board really wants to be as inclusive as possible for those high school freshmen or sophomores that are taking pre-A P coursework. And so, um, I, I would say our middle schools do, um, in, in many cases, do a great job of providing rigor um, with that pre-A P coursework in mind. They know that the rigor is expected at high school and they, and they do try to prepare their students for that level.
In special ed though, that's the distinction to be made. If, if the middle school is not flowing that curriculum into that department, by the time they hit high school, it's a completely different. And it's the, also the support team, right? You need to make sure that the E As or even the teachers who are writing the I E Ps and things of that nature also have
Have that one.
That, and the communication to the parents as well. This is new for what your, um, I E P is expecting of you, so we need to make sure that it's also communicated and understood and aware. And if it's not, then it turns into a, a whole, like, where is that coming from? And I, and I'm just noticing it from being in different schools that not all of them are the same as well as the high schools. Not all of them are flowing them into that space. So I was just curious.
We can be sure to include that in the transition planning for students who are moving from A P to B.
Yeah, I, I was thinking definitely something like a letter to let them know too, your expectation of what they were doing in middle school has now shot up and you need to be ready. And we also need to make sure that we have the staff. That's there. Since we are coming out a little bit of the pandemic, I know that was really challenging to get solid staff and is that, how is that working out? Like, for really, how, how are we doing that?
It's a daunting question. So, um, you, you saw the numbers of staff that we have and we have approximately, we're allocated approximately a hundred and sixty special ed teachers. We're down about fourteen right now. So, I mean, every teacher we're down is, is bad, but fourteen isn't as bad as it could be. Our E As, we have two hundred and thirty, I think was about the number, and we're down about twenty-two right now. Now, but that might have changed since the last time I looked. It changes on a daily basis. At the worst this year, that they were down by about thirty-five. So again, um, the, the problem with the shortages is they seem to be clustered in certain school, schools or certain parts of the district. So we know Mitchell High School is very highly impacted by staff shortages this year. But I will say Mitchell High School did amazing things with students and, um, and it was their attitude that really, that really, um, made them successful this year.
Yeah, that's great. There, there is one more thing. And I don't, I know Dr. K helped with the graphing of the testing. High schoolers in the testing was like that small? That test group or the participation was that small?
Since it was a year-to-year comparison, last year was, participation was very low, this year our participation was, was, was right on point. So I think we've addressed that issue, but we can't carry back to the previous issue.
For me, it's your thought is, I was just curious about that. I think that's everything. Thank you.
You said you were down fourteen teachers. Is that because you couldn't find them? Or because of not enough students?
It's because we have open positions and not, then no applicants.
Well, you're having the problem everybody's having.
Yes.
Are there any other challenges that you're facing right now? You shared a lot of good things, but are there any other?
There are many challenges that we face all the time. But, um, but I mean, as you know, in special education, we have, we have legal challenges sometimes that, that we're facing. Um, we're responding to individual, individualized kinds of needs. The, the shortages that we're talking about, one of the values of having our cluster support team is that, um, especially during the pandemic, our behavior interventionists would drop whatever it was they were doing, they would go out and work in a building for, for a day or two or three or two weeks sometimes. Our instructional coaches were doing some of the same things. Our facilitators would come back at the end of the day tired because they'd been working directly with students all day. I had to teach middle school English one time and kindergarten another time. So, so those are some of the, some of the difficulties that we're, that we're having. But, but we feel fortunate to, to have the allocation that we've, that we can send out support as needed. But shortages are, are a big problem and, and they're going to continue and, and, and probably get worse in our, in our world in special ed.
So has there been any brainstorming on how to maybe do that, and when it's probably coming?
Right, it's, it's that dual focus, right? So once we have staff, that's what we're trying to do with all of our profession, increase professional development. One of the things I didn't say is that we're gonna be, uh, really hitting E A professional development hard next year. They've also been telling us, you're not giving us what we need, and so we're gonna respond to that next year. So once we get them, we feel like we can mentor and coach and keep our people. It's the attracting part that's really hard right now. And in some cases with our S S P groups, like our psychologists, social workers, speech-language pathologists, we don't have enough of those people coming out of schools to, to be able to hire them. And they can also work pretty easily in other places other than school districts, right? Teachers can't go other places, but, um, but S S Ps can go other places to clinics and whatnot and.
And how's the salary scale? Are you having trouble with salary? Because of what? Or just shortage?
Well, shortage because there aren't enough people, right? So, so every school district has openings and there just aren't enough people coming, coming to us. And I think for some of these groups, yeah, salary, we're competing with other school districts and outside agencies. Where are we?
Compared to other schools, middle, bottom, top?
I'm probably not the best person to speak to that. I think our salaries are probably commensurate. But, um, some school districts have large signing bonuses for hard-to-fill positions. Um, some add, you know, percentage on top of the base for, for hard-to-fill positions. Some are offering other kinds of bonuses and incentives, and those are hard to quantify. But, but if you look at salary schedules across districts, I think it would look similar.
So Glenn, can, can you add anything to that? Like where are our teachers in comparison to other districts with salary?
I can. It's not a short answer, um, so I apologize. Every teacher's salary schedule across the state is different, right? Some start different, some end different, some have different steps, some give different education increments. So they're all different. And so the best apples-to-apples comparison I've come up with over my career is the twenty-six-year earning power of teachers. That if, uh, and we found a company, they're out of Wyoming, where they actually march a teacher through the, the salary schedule for that school district over twenty-six years, which is the average career of a teacher, by the way, and calculate their career earning over twenty-six years. It's the closest I can find to apples-to-apples. It's not perfect, but it makes some sense when you think about it. They assume you get your, your bachelor's here and you get your sixteen credits here and you get your master's here, et cetera, et cetera. And they use the same assumption for everybody and they do every school district in the state of Colorado. And we subscribe to that service. It's really fascinating data. So I remember the days, cuz we're not as strong with salary as we are with family benefits. That's definitely the strength of D eleven is with family benefits. We're not nearly as strong with single benefits because a lot of districts pay a hundred percent of the single premium. We only pay the seventy to seventy-five percent of the single premium. But the answer to your question is, um, we used to be, when I first started with the district, when we were the third biggest school district in the state, now we're twelve. We were the fifth best with, uh, salary and family benefits. Now we're fifteenth. We are, if you look at just salary schedule alone, these are the twenty biggest districts. They are the closest to our peer group that we can find. It includes the big districts in El Paso County, but it doesn't include the little tiny districts like Manitou or, or the rural districts in El Paso County. It's the big districts, Harrison, Falcon, Academy. Uh, of the big districts, when you look at salary schedule only, we're nineteenth out of twenty. So we've certainly lost some ground. That's the life of a declining enrollment district over the years. And I would say, uh, we've lost some competitiveness with other school districts, and I'm glad to share that data. We just finished working up last year. It, it runs a year in behind, so we just got the, the twenty-one, twenty-two data uh, to compare to every school district and, um, I'd be glad to share that with the board. But, um, we're, we're definitely losing some ground. And, and it also depends on kind of where you're at in the salary schedule. So some places were much stronger, the bottom end, the years of experience. If you have a lot of experience in education, we're stronger as opposed to newer teachers with less education, we're weaker. Sorry for that long answer.
Good, thank you.
I'm gonna give you some additional information.
Thank you.
So the, uh, P D that you mentioned, I think you said that also goes towards the general staff, not just the E As or the special education teachers? I'm just thinking we're trying to be more inclusive, having the children in the classroom more. So that first grade teacher maybe doesn't have a lot of experience with special education needs, are they, are there opportunities for them for P D in how to manage a classroom now with a student who has higher needs?
Yes, um, some of the P D I didn't talk about were the P Ds that we do on, on professional development days or teacher workdays, which are, um, taught by some of our behavior interventionists about classroom management skills and, uh, behavior intervention and those kinds of things that are, um, and, and anybody would be invited to come to those E As, Gen Ed teachers or special ed teachers. I've run a class for years now on a, a special education overview for general educators and administrators. And it's just interesting for the people who show up that really don't know very much about special ed to kind of hear what's going on and how they can help support students with I E Ps either in their classroom or the I E P process. So we do offer a number of trainings. The trainings we did that were the seven A M., eleven A M., three thirty were really geared more toward our special ed staff. But we did have the occasional Gen Ed person pop in.
This remind me a little bit of the history. There were some state laws that changed also, right, on limitations of how much an E A could be involved. That there, in recent years, some of, there's been just a little bit more limitation on how much.
How much oversight they can have without a direct supervision, maybe is what you're thinking about?
I don't even know. Did something change in recent years state law-wise? I thought that something had, that, uh, that, that the children are more in the classroom without needing aid.
I see, yes.
As, as previous years.
What the state is really looking for is inclusion, inclusive practices in general education. What that means is we might push support into the classroom, so there could be a special ed teacher who's co-teaching with the general ed teacher. Or it could be that there's an E A in that classroom, either directly supporting that student or, or supporting a number of students and benefiting that student. But the state is really looking for inclusive practices and for I E P teams to, um, to really have serious conversations about, um, why we're pulling a student out of, of a typical classroom and, and to talk about the harm that might come from doing that. So that's perhaps the change you're thinking about. Yeah, and we're very, we're very clear about, about that.
Okay.
Any other questions? I do have a few questions too, but I just wanted to make sure any of the other board. Is it possible for you to go back to your present, presentation or if, go back to the first, the third slide up there, that I think it was page number three? The, yeah, there you go. The caseload size at middle school, it's lower because you have more challenging students out there?
That just is where it happens to be right now, right? I think we, we might, we, we might hope that we're gonna have caseload sizes of fifteen, but throughout the school year, we ask schools to share their caseload data with us. And it just depends on how many students have moved in and moved out. This was a really hard, um, it was really hard to determine allocations during the worst part of the pandemic because we might have some schools that gained students and other schools that lost students that hadn't previously done that. So we were trying to think about how to make it fair for schools. And so during the pandemic, we, we opted to make as little adjustment to the allocations as we could because we didn't know when students would be coming back. So what you're seeing right there is a snapshot in time. I think, um, sometimes the high schools are a bit lower than, than the others, than the other levels. That's just where it is right now.
Okay, so the, what I'm trying to get at is the caseload size per teacher is not determined by the sign, the, uh, the significance of the disability the student has. If you've got a really, really challenging student, does that teacher then has only three or four students? You know, as opposed to having a fifteen-student caseload?
Right, schools, schools kind of make that determination themselves. So they're given, let's say, a, a, middle school is given five special education teachers and, um, and there might be a very mild caseload, and so one of those teachers might carry twenty students.
Okay.
And the S S N, the significant support needs teacher, might only have eight or nine, but that averages out.
But when you make the allocation, do you look at if it's a mild or if it's a severe need for the student? When you make the allocation of teachers out there?
What we start with is the, the size of the school and the, and the number of students on I E Ps. That's where we start with our formula. We kind of add a mobility factor in that kind of helps us refine that. And then, and then we just have conversations, um, on our special education lead team. And then we take it out to schools, we talk to principals and we talk to special ed teams so that we're sure that we understand what the specific needs in that building might be. So we might adjust E A, um, needs a little bit, so they, they might be, might have high needs, very low caseload size, but they might need very low caseload size, but they might need an additional EA and we can factor that in. Um so we we have those conversations in January. It feels very early when we don't know what the next school year is gonna be. And so we're we're talking about four schools right now that are popping with having very high caseload numbers. And so we're trying to determine, do we, do we make a decision now? Or do we wait until we see the whites of eyes in the in the fall to to make a decision about whether or not a school needs additional resources? So we're always, always talking and thinking about that.
So if there is a school that requires additional need because of increased enrollment, we do provide that in August or September?
Yes, we can, yeah. We hold, we hold a certain amount of FTE out so that we have some flexibility to do that. It's possible we could run out at some point. We haven't yet.
Is there a caseload size for the EAs too?
It's um at the elementary, it's about one to ten students, one one EA for every ten students. Um I'm gonna get this wrong and I know one of my facilitators is gonna beat me up later. Um at the middle school and high school, I believe it's a, it's it's a little lower or a little higher. I can't remember. One's one to, one to ten and the others one to eight. But yes, there's a formula that we use for that also.
But again, there could be a case where a student has such specific needs, you have to have one EA assigned to that student.
Yes.
Would that be like an effective needs student or a SIED?
Yes.
Um type disability.
Yes, or a medically fragile student. Sometimes we have those that have, that really need to have an adult with them all the time.
Yeah.
And we we are uh responsive to those kind of needs by providing at least an allocation to that school?
Yes, yes.
And when, is it become, is the school, do the schools hire the EAs or do we at central admin? The schools hire EA?
The schools hi- hire the EAs and their special education teachers.
Okay, so that's why sometimes there are vacancies at the school level. You are not able to move an EA from one school to another school if it is necessary?
Uh well, that's maybe not an easy answer.
Yeah.
We we possibly could. The problem with moving EAs is that um EAs, EAs might resign.
Yeah.
You try to move them to another school. And so we're really trying to keep the people that we have and keep them happy.
Yeah, perfect. That makes sense. So it's sometimes if a school has a challenging student and you are not able to provide that EA, instead of moving an EA to that school, it's easier to move the student to the EA at a different school?
We, we have, yes, we can do that.
Okay.
We've done that. We 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 try not to do that. We really try to bring the support to the student. But sometimes if a school just can't hire, we we make the offer to the parent. We could, we could unilaterally place a student in another school, but we really like to have parent input, have them look at the, at the new school to see if that's something they would like.
Um and we've discussed this before about the EA salaries being uh minimum or thirteen dollars or fourteen dollars, whatever it is. I think hopefully that will get addressed. But maybe you or Glenn can talk about the School Finance Act right now and the additional spent money that's coming in. And how is that going to be spent or how, what's the plan for that?
Well, Glenn and I are talking, but I'm gonna let him talk.
Okay.
He's so shy.
Because I, I don't wanna use money that's not mine to use.
Okay.
Thank you, Director Goodbogut. Um the uh, the School Finance Act, uh we just got last week, a very significant bill that's gonna increase our total special ed allocation uh by amount of one point nine million dollars, which is a lot of money.
Two D eleven.
Two D eleven, that's D eleven share. Um and we have already built that into the budget. Now, keep it in mind, and and Ms. Goodbogut and I are together all the time because we're in teacher negotiations. Uh so we've been talking about it quite a bit. Keep in mind that we subsidize special ed very heavily. Um probably if you, I don't know if you count six B, which is the federal money, with ECEA, which is the state money. You know, we, it's maybe fifty fifty, I don't know, in the ballpark of that, where we're getting fifty percent reimbursed from state and feds and fifty percent is general fund. So um I checked around with other districts, said, what are other districts doing? And that most of them said, we're just putting it in the general fund because we're already subsidizing special ed. Uh I didn't really feel right about that. And so when I talked to Judy, I said, you know, um we're, the board has already approved a compensation market adjustment for low-paid and hard-to-fill positions, which Phoebe would have to just, just, I don't know how that's getting broken out by category. But I know some of that's going to spend. Um and then we added another half a million dollars once we got the news on the one point nine, just for special ed EAs. So I don't know what that'll mean in terms of, you know, hourly wage. Phoebe will have to work that through the system to see. Um how many total pair pros do you have, do you think?
About two hundred and thirty-five.
And and then, of course, teachers, you have.
Hundred and sixty.
Yeah, so you you know, you have four hundred staff people uh tied up in that. But but when you, you've got two hundred and thirty-five people that are gonna get at least half a million dollars and probably more depending on the other pot of money the board proved. I think you're gonna see a very significant increase in EAs before it's all done. I just, I wish Phoebe was here to, she knows better how that will trickle into the, trickle down all the way to the hourly range.
Okay, but at least we are looking into addressing that.
Absolutely. I mean, I feel like uh we did better than most other districts, that we really made that a priority. And we were doing the right thing, you you know, I could have just not even told Judy. She she knows because she's following it too, but but I felt like that was the right thing to do for special.
I mean, it's a priority. We've talked about it.
Absolutely, yeah.
So from what I heard from you, Glenn, that one point nine million is not going to go into the general?
It goes into the general fund. Remember, the vast majority of expenses are in general fund. There is some in in the grants fund that's Title VI, but it goes into the general fund as revenue. And of course, we're increasing, we've dedicated five hundred thousand dollars of that just to go to EAs.
Okay, um and then if you can pull up the graph, which had the least, thank you, Glenn.
Yep.
The one about least restrictive environment?
I'm sorry, I'm removing your show.
That's okay.
You're almost there.
There you go. So um and ju- just so that I understand this, um uh the least restrictive environment for every child would look different?
Yes, well, yes, well, um and what this, so there are categories in special education of least restrictive environment. A student with, in in the very least restrictive environment is in a general education setting at least eighty percent of their their day. And then there's, you know, forty-nine to seventy-nine percent and then um under forty percent would be our most restrictive environments. So we're really looking for is for students to be in that eighty percent or more in general education every day. So that is where we're making gains, is in i- is in that high highest bracket. What the state wants to see is that students with disabilities are participating with their typical peers. At least the state's target is seventy-one point something, at least seventy-one point something percent of their day in um in general education, not, I'm sorry, I said that wrong. That seventy-one point seven percent of students with disabilities are in Gen Ed at least eighty percent of their day.
Okay.
That's how I meant to say that.
So then there are, in District Eleven, about twenty-seven percent of our students are not in that type of environment?
That's correct.
So they are uh in more restrictive environment?
They might have more significant needs and so some of our schools have Significant Support Needs programs. So those might be students with either extreme, you know, medical concerns that just need to be educated someplace differently or for medical reasons or students who are more dysregulated with their behavior and require more direct instruction to be safe at school.
Or just students with a double dip on, you know, math support and NELA support, where they've got two different intervention classes instead of having a elective course or something like that. So it drops below the eighty percent mark, right?
That's right, and we were seeing that more at the high school level until this school year when we uh kind of pulled the plug on pulling students out for their English and math credits. Um we said, we, special ed just said, you can't do that anymore. You need to include those students in general ed. So we expect next, next year's LRE rate to go up even more.
Are they getting what they need then? If they're not getting pulled out for that one-on-one?
They are getting what they need, yes. And and really, the, what the research shows, it's it's a little counter to special ed programming because almost any research shows that even if you don't do very much with a student, if you leave them in their general education class, they have a less um disrupted day. So what happens is you you might pull students out and do something, you know, miraculous with them, but they come back into the classroom and they've lost something, they've missed something. It might be relationship with other students, it might be relationship with the teacher. It might be some content that they missed that now that they can't catch up on because somebody else was trying to remediate a skill. And so we're trying to move away from remediation of skills into how can we support a student in 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 their current setting to get as many of those skills as they can?
And two graphs, uh two, two slides down.
Over this.
The last question I had, there's another one out there that says LEP, that is that part of students with disabilities too?
Those are students with second language.
Oh, okay, great. What percentage of students with disabilities take the Galileo Benchmark Assessments or or CMS testing? Do you have it?
I don't have the data in front of me.
Is that like fifty percent of our students with disabilities take CMS testing or is it less?
I would say probably more than that. We're just, we're just finishing up our uh, our cleaning up of that data for accommodations, but it's uh, it's the majority. Easily, easily the majority.
Okay.
Some of those will take an alternative form, which is called COAL, but it's still, it's the equivalent, that's for significant disabilities.
Okay.
It's the equivalent to the state testing.
Okay.
And I I mentioned earlier, the state has not provided our our scorecard with regard to performance. We didn't get, we didn't get compliance since um since the pandemic. But previous to the pandemic, our participation rate was was right where it needed to be with the state bubble. We met the state target.
Okay.
For participation.
And we find out soon enough what the participation was this year.
Right.
Yes, let's come out. Thank you. That's all I had. Any further questions?
Thanks.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Go ahead.
All right.
Terry, part, I I sure, are you part two?
Sure, yes. Um part two is uh information regarding the services that we provide to our students who qualify for gifted and talented. Um and Emily Andrews, who is our gifted and talented facilitator, is here to talk with you about that this evening.
Thanks.
Thank you for the opportunity to share with you the great things that are going on in gifted education in D eleven for this academic year. We had a successful gifted education monitoring visit with CDE um with the top priorities of serving the top fifteen percent of each school through a lens of talent development, including using local norms, delivering culturally relevant talented and gifted and talented programming where students see themselves reflected in the programming that they receive. And updating the FTE allocation model for a more equitable distribution of gifted and talented teachers to students. The gifted and talented team is committed to providing challenging experiences for all learners that build on individual strengths and optimize academic potential. We continue to focus on the specific academic aptitudes of reading, math, writing, science, and social studies, and world languages. And we will continue to meet the academic needs of students. We identify students at every grade level for academic gifted programming. We have sixteen hundred and sixty students identified at or above the ninety-fifth percentile in our academic areas and six hundred and sixty-two students in the Talent Development Group, which is the eighty-fifth to the ninety-fourth percentile on nationally normed standardized tests. We worked closely with our middle school teams to provide multiple opportunities to gain specific evidence for two hundred and six students in creativity, dance, and the visual arts. We have a unique opportunity going into next academic year to be responsive to updated identification guidance from the Colorado Department of Education. The updated guidance provides us with the priority of developing a robust body of evidence with multiple data points from multiple sources using local norms to support a student's profile of strengths. The gifted and talented team with the performing arts team continue to collaborate to identify District Eleven students in the visual and performing arts. I'm so thankful to the communications department who designed this video to showcase our visual arts adjudication day earlier this month, and I'd like to play it for you. You might need a control click. Yeah?
Maybe go to the bottom of that.
Can I come up?
Wait, what?
You got it. Oh, can you go to the?
Previous slide, sorry.
Can we go to that slide?
Okay, I suppose.
Okay, let's go.
Let's, okay, you may not show it, and that's okay.
I think it took much longer to get this correct.
If we don't get it to work though, you will have it in your package.
You do have it in your package.
Anytime. Thank you.
Oh.
That's okay.
And Emily, some of our directors have um already watched it too, which is great.
Oh, good, okay. If you all have already watched it, then I will not spend our time tonight. Thank you for trying to run it. We tested it earlier and it worked great.
They did, they both links worked off of Board Docs and I watched them both, so.
Oh, good.
Yeah, they were there.
Well, I'm so thankful for our communications department. They have really supported the effort that we have made in the performing arts areas. They've helped us post our videos to Facebook, um which is so exciting that we're really getting some great buzz around town. Um I love having all the likes on Facebook when all of my D eleven friends see our videos. So thank you for taking the time to watch them on Board Docs. So through this process of um talent in place peak for visual arts and for dance, we found aspiring costume designers, students of graphic design, and tattoo artists. When we know a student's area of strength, it helps us connect them with the programming that meets their needs. We have two tip days planned in partnership with Colorado College for next year. We will host a day in the fall for theater, visual arts, and dance. And a day in the spring, we will host vocal and instrumental music. Every gifted resource teacher was asked to analyze the data from Power School to identify students who it, who are hidden in plain sight. Through this data review, we were able to find several students at elementary, middle, and high school for talent development and tier-three programming. This increased awareness will support our effort to meet the needs of our underserved populations. And it is an absolute joy to me to hear success stories directly from the gifted resource teachers, from the students they found in the data analysis that they did. Since March of twenty twenty-two, literally last month, the gifted and talented team has identified four hundred and sixty-eight tier-three and talent development students. From twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two, the gifted and talented population trends across gender and ethnic groups have largely held steady. Notably, the efforts to close the identification gaps will be more fully reflected in the data in the future um for all of the work that we've done this academic year to catch up with October count for next academic year. The ESAR funding increased gifted resource teacher support in ele- in eleven elementary schools for twenty-one, twenty-two. And for next academic year increases the support for at least eight D eleven schools for twenty-two, twenty-three. Thank you for your time tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Is tier-three the higher end of gifted and talented? Is that what that means?
It's the ninety-fifth percent and a percentile and above.
And above, okay, thank you. That's what I figured. I just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
Yes, and that's the number that the state publishes and works with. It's our tier-three.
Okay. Is that, how does that compare with other districts?
Um I I would say that roughly we're around seven percent. Um and that's, that's about where we want to be.
Okay.
Seven percent of our D eleven students are in that tier.
Of any district students. And and some districts are at five percent, some districts are at eight percent, but we kind of, we look for that seven percent, tier-three.
Uh, great question. So with this slide right here, um does that, that comes to a total of nineteen schools then?
Um we're able to, yeah, a total of nineteen schools are impacted by the ESAR funding. Mm-hmm, and so what we.
So I guess, is it eleven this year and a separate eight next or, you know, eight next year where that means we've lost support for three or is it in addition?
So what we look to do, especially with our elementary schools, is we were trying to support the need of any one gifted resource teacher who is only in a school one day a week. So we were able to move all of those point-two schools to a point-four. So they're, they increased their support from one day a week to two. And in some cases, we were able to put together. And in some cases, we were able to put together um a teacher who supported five schools two years ago into two schools this academic year by putting them in a building two and a half days and another building in two and a half days. And so with the most recent ESSR funding, we were able to support the move of our teachers from point two to point four, and in some of our middle schools, give them an additional um point four percent of FTE.
And the other question was, um, you know, this standardized tests that identify RGT kids. And those are the partic- they're not just any standardized test, right, they're the ones targeted to test that. And I know they were like, you take it in second, so you know if you get GT program, it's in third. I don't know, do we test incoming students? Who show any problems, I mean, so we know there's this churn constantly through the year. Is there any support for kids that come later?
There is, um, we do a universal screening with the COGAT at second grade. And then at middle school, we partnered with Education Insights this year to and next year to support casting a wide net for our middle school students, because we know that students come into our district and may not ever have a cognitive ability score. And so that is um really looking at that middle school population to try to offer that COGAT type assessment for them. Um, we typically use nationally normed assessments in order to identify gifted and talented students um a a sort of our starting point. And so um we offer our Galileo assessments three times a year, and so we use those to help inform which students do we see that their data is um needing a second look. And so then our gifted resource teachers will move in with either offering a COGAT or an ITBS or other assessments to look at ability. And so we're we're constantly looking at data and we're constantly offering additional assessments.
I just, one one thought that comes to mind. You know, I've the experience with Academy for Advanced Creative Learning, and some of those kids just don't test well. Which is true for all of our sure kids, right, there are just some that don't do well.
Sure.
And so is there a way to get that gifted identification other than some of the get the dance and art, you have that, put you in math or science without scoring extremely well in COGATs?
So there's a few ways that we address that, is we have some individually untimed administered assessments that we can use, and we find great success with those. Because the student isn't time, has doesn't have that time pressure.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's where we'll start, is we'll start with an ability assessment. Um, really trying to get that ability score that they may not have gotten through a COGAT. Um, at the same time, the updated identification, and and even the current identification guidance provides us with a with an achievement only system i- if we don't have that ability score. We we have a way to identify students, it it's just we we sort of proceed with caution with an achievement only um a body of evidence, we we want to see those elements of giftedness, and if we can document that in other ways with supporting data, with anecdotal data, qualitative data, um, we take it.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
I just wanna say from from our perspective and head insights, the the approach that Emily's team has taken is really healthy. And uh best practice, it's been great to work with you guys to to really look at that, kind of especially that later identification. Really make, use a use a pretty sophisticated model, I think, I could pretty proud of, so.
On um slide ten of twelve, with the breakdown by demographics. Uh, that was data that was presented in uh RAAR findings back in Au- August of last year. Have you guys looked at that and broken that down to kind of see how to try to align that to with our student population versus the GT population and some of those gaps which are closer or farther apart than others, have have you guys talked with your team about how to address some of that?
I would say that's probably my biggest um mission.
Great.
In in gifted and talented in D eleven is to help our gifted and talented population be reflective of the district's demographics. And that's where we worked so hard on that this year, and and we just aren't seeing the reflection of some of that work. Because this um particular slide uses October count data from this year.
Okay.
And so we're really looking forward to see what some of that looks like.
The next year's data. Yeah.
Um, i- it's really important to us that we that we see the students that are in our seats. And every gifted resource teacher is working very diligently to support that top fifteen percent of the school using local norms if we need to.
I appreciate you continuing that work, thank you.
So I, oh.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, I have a couple of questions, can you just explain what rewards, what that means?
Sure. So if you look at an entire picture of a school and you're looking at all of the data, let's just say a Galileo reading assessment. And you write and you rank those scores top like hundred percent, all the way to whatever the lowest score may be in that school for a particular grade level. Well, where do we draw the line for who the top fifteen percent of that school is? That percentile may not be at the eighty-fifth percentile on a nationally normed assessment. It may be in the seventy-seventh percentile, it may be in the seventy-fifth percentile, and that's still the top fifteen percent of that school. And so having gifted resource teachers intentionally look at the top fifteen percent in order to attempt to provide programming or support or conversations with the teacher with ideas for what they could do in the classroom. That's really what we are are thankful that we have the flexibility to do. We don't just draw a line in the sand and say eighty-five, oh, we got an eighty-four, well, so sorry. We can't help you, we don't, we don't do that. And so using local norms is is a shift in practice and a shift in guidance from the state.
Okay.
Um, from from my experience.
So then, uh, this is a little bit anecdotal, I know of a student and it kind of just bear with me, I know of a student who in like kindergarten, first grade was getting pulled out for to meet with the gifted teacher. Now is second grade, did the COGAT test not sho- showing gifted. And um the parent heard and he thought that I don't meet with that teacher anymore. And so then, I guess I'm thinking in terms of at elementary school, they're top fifteen percent. And they go on to a middle school, now they're not maybe top fifteen anymore, so how do we handle those kinds of situations? I mean, I felt so sad for this child.
It's possibly one of the hardest conversations we have.
And are these conversations being had, the parent, it just, she's not being followed, you know, and so how do you have that, as the parent, how do they, I didn't know how to coach the parent, how to have that con- conversation with the child?
I I would say that that if you hear situations like that, certainly uh request that that parent reach out to the gifted resource teacher. And the gifted resource teacher can explain the body of evidence and what data they're using, yeah.
And I don't think they were questioning it, it was more of that child
Yes.
was sad.
Yes.
Now, and so how is the parent
Yeah.
who speak to that child and say, you know, you're still awesome.
You're still awesome.
You know what I mean?
Yes.
So, and I just said, I didn't know how to coach the parent either, like, oh, so heartbreaking.
Sometimes we we need to acknowledge kids' gifts, and and many of those gifts are not measured in school. And so to help coach that specific student or any student in that situation, to say, okay, y- you have talent in this area and your gift may be somewhere else.
Right.
And so that's the conversation that I typically would have with families on an individual basis and um, it's not, it's it's hard to have that conversation because the student does have their heart hurt a little bit.
Yeah, and so I'm just thinking that, you know, like I said, they're in an elementary school, they're in the top fifteen, now they go to a middle school, there's more kids. They're not in that top fifteen anymore. Just making sure that we are uh addressing that with the students.
Yep, agree, that's a very important thing to do.
And that they're not. Yeah.
One one thing that is one of the conversations that we're having regularly as our fifth graders go to sixth grade and our eighth graders go to freshman is is to really have those transition conversations, so I'm glad you brought that up, cuz I will continue to emphasize how important that is.
Yeah, yeah, um. And then, okay, so my last question was about the ESSR funded positions, and this is something I have mentioned before, you know, we're bringing in, which is awesome, I'm sure you're gonna speak to the um translators that we're bringing in. And it's awesome that we're able to provide those supports, and we're providing more gifted and talented um teachers at these schools, but what are we gonna do when that ESSR money runs out? And uh, I'm just really scared for when we hit that day, so do you have any thoughts?
It it is a concern of mine, and we we have a couple of different um, couple of different thoughts going into the next two years. Is um we are hopeful that we can demonstrate that with this extra FTE that we're able to really meet some of the board's priorities of um of of supporting the academic growth of students. Um, and so when when you think about the caseload of the special education team and the caseload of the gifted team, uh our high school teams have approximately two hundred, two hundred and fifteen students on their caseload. Um, and then when you look at the middle schools having a prime, I mean, on average, depending on the school, about hundred, hundred and thirty kids on their caseload. And then at elementary school, I mean, certainly we have some schools that have a handful of kids on their caseload. And we've got several elementary schools that have fifty, sixty, we have an elementary school with ninety kids on their caseload.
Mm-hmm.
And so, so what we believe is that with more FTE, we can demonstrate academic achievement. When a student is receiving gifted programming two days a week as compared to one. Um, so we would like to ultimately make the case in two years that that we would make a request to say, can we continue to fund these teachers um in a in a recurring um financial request. Um, at the same time, if that is not an option. Um, our team is also looking at, how do we look at serving those kids one day a week differently? And and we have some ideas that we can plan for next academic year. Um, really to consider rolling out three years out. Um, so we have some some plans in place, our team has some amazing ideas for what we have the potential to to do to really solve that problem of students only getting programming once a week.
Okay. And so with these additional eleven and eight, are all of our schools now at a point four FTE for D three?
So there there were a few situations where we have a gifted resource teacher serving three schools. And the relationships that that teacher has with those schools was so valuable. Um, I worked very closely with the administrators and they they said, please, 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 keep our person in place. And so this particular person is um point two at one elementary school, point three at another elementary school, and point five at the middle school, and it's a cluster of schools. And so this teacher literally works with these two elementary schools and brings them to the middle school, and it's a it's a big picture.
Yeah.
And so I conceded and said, okay, we we can maintain this, and that teacher in specific has reorganized her schedule. So that she's doing a morning at one school and afternoon at another, so she will see the kids multiple days during the week. She's not just limited to the one day. So it's that kind of a situation that we are very carefully looking at. Um, so I can't just say, yes, we're all at point four. What I can say is that we have several um candidates that are applying to active jobs that are um published at point at point four with HR. So we've got several schools that have their their point four that we're taking applicants for and interviewing actively.
So my last thing is when you Google District eleven, an ad pops up and it says Color Springs D eleven has the number one GT program. So if you guys do that on your phone right now, uh, somebody just pointed that out to me today. So that's exciting that we have this ad out there saying we have the number one GT program.
There, we have a lot of really strong programs in the region. And and we um got a really great reading with the gifted education monitoring with CDE this year. And I'm just so thankful that we have a collaborative effort with all the gifted directors, I work very closely with them on a on a regular basis. Um, we're often emailing or meeting weekly. So um really strong gifted presence in the Pike's Peak region.
So is this ad being eight four out of your budget, or?
I I am not, I work closely with Deborah and her team on communications um that go out, and so.
Good job.
So is that from you, the department of the ad that?
Cuz it's an actual ad, it's it's
It is, it's from our department, it's the uh digital um efforts that we do with our consultant.
So just, great, but what are we using to measure that we are the number one GT program?
We were basing that um on our gifted education monitoring visit, that we increased our compliance from um the measure that we had five years ago, and we're in compliance um in compliance with um nine out of ten of our ratios. And with this additional FTE, our CDE contact um is willing to change our rating to a hundred percent compliance.
Okay, um, are you done?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Um, following on what Director Nelson was talking about uh with the ESSR funding, how many total FTEs does that add up to with all the?
Three point six for this academic year, and I believe it was two point four for last academic year.
Okay, so about uh six FTEs. And six FTEs are able to service now nineteen schools from what you're talking about, is that what that is, okay?
Yep.
In this year's allocation, did some schools also lose FTEs?
It did, so what we did is we looked at the total population at each level, so elementary, middle, and high school. And we um basically looked at the students that were in the grade levels being serviced and determined what the top fifteen percent would be for each of those schools. And if we had some schools that dropped in um the number of students that they were gifted, that they were serving for gifted education that didn't warrant a one point O any longer, like maybe five years ago it warranted a one point O, and now it it warrants say a point six. Um, we had to make the tough decision to change that allocation, be so that allocation can be more nimble and support other schools um that have growing programs and more students up and coming.
So that's based on the identified number of GT students, not the whole student enrollment population of the?
Um, we looked at, we we did take the whole enrollment of the school for the grades being serviced. And then we looked at the top fifteen percent, so um tier three and talent pool to base that decision, because we want our gifted resource teachers to grow that talent development group. Um, so we did not just look at the tier three top five percent um in order to make that calculation.
Okay, uh, the reason I ask is I think I I know of at least two emails the board received. I think one was from um Martina's parent and Freedom parent. Both talked about uh reduction, them being, having GT students and reduction in uh GT FTEs uh.
The good news is that we have a point four, several point four positions that could easily pair on the other side of that. So that any one staff member could still have full-time employment.
Okay, and hopefully
Cuz that's a huge priority to me, cuz I I want to continue to retain and my our people that are on our team, we we have an excellent team that works really hard.
Good. And then when you, Director Nelson again talked about the ESSR funding running out and you saying, hey, you want to come in front of the board and make sure that this is going to be a recurring budget item. That's what we want to see too. So is that a specific metric that two years from now that you can come and demonstrate to the board? This is why, is that all just going to be based on what you're talking about pulling the academic achievement of fifteen percent of students? Is that what you're going to base it on?
I would like to base it on academic growth in math and reading for students that are identified in math and reading. And then I would also like to have a component of how many students have we identified in the arts that are not necessarily um specific academic aptitudes, but are in more visual performing arts. Um, but but really looking at those students that are identified in those specific um content areas and how, what does their academic growth look like? Um, one of my plans that I implemented this year and plan to continue to to host next year for our team is is I want our team to have agency over what goals they have for their academic achievement for their students. Um, so certainly I'll be having conversations with them um to to quantify that.
Good, I mean, that's
Yeah.
Whoever is on the board at that point in time, if you can come and demonstrate that, I'm sure we want to provide the needs or take care of the needs of all our students, and that includes GT students. And sometimes that's a population that we don't sufficiently address with the supports that they do need. We take care of the other end, but we need to be able to take care of, and that's a potential that when you can go and talk to North and they do it in a creative way uh with not even being a GT magnet program, but they are able to do an academy, but they they are able to target those students, the way they go about doing it. Um, and Chris Kilroy out there waltzes by that that helps increase the enrollment in a school too, so whether it's increasing the student achievement there, which is a board priority, increasing student enrollment in a school. You can demonstrate or or increase the number of identified students
Right.
in that talent pool. Yep?
Yes, sir.
Great, goo- good luck with that.
Thank you.
Um, last thing, and maybe you can provide an update on this, um. Last year, there was some turbulence at West Middle School, the GT magnet program, how's that program going right now?
The program is doing so well, and the teacher that we were talking about that serves this cluster of schools is the um teacher at West in the GMP, and she has done an incredible job of really supporting the families that are coming into West Middle School GMP. Um, the program is growing, and we had, we worked really hard to have enough applicants this year at sixth grade to continue to grow the program. And we are going to be funding um all four core academic areas with the FTE for next year, so we are, I I'm really pleased with how stable the program is this year.
Has student enrollment at that school also? Has student enrollment at that school also justified that extra FTE that you're talking about? From what I understand, last year, some FTEs were let go, let go. And because of that, a lot of the parents were unhappy with that situation.
Mm.
And if I'm categorizing this wrong, uh please?
The FTE didn't change, um we have staffing who changed, yeah, so the FTE remained the same.
Right, staffing issues, yeah. Yeah.
Um and and so what I would say is that our task with the West Middle GMP is to really grow it from the sixth grade on through. Um and if we can have seventh and eighth grade students, we certainly will um let them apply and and bring them in to the seventh and eighth grade should they choose to do that. We're really, we've really been focusing on our sixth grade enrollment. And um wanting to get students that not only were planning to attend West Middle, but also getting students from other schools um to choice to West Middle.
You have a great market out there in that labor and then when you're talking about ninety students in uh in elementary school, I'm thinking you're referring to Chibita. Okay, so but when you look at the Chibita population of identified gifted students. They don't tend to end up going to that West Magnet program, for whatever reason, they end up choosing something else, okay, and sometimes out of the district.
Yeah. Sometimes out of the district, but they also are choosing District eleven programs that have strong gifted programming as a neighborhood school. And so that it's it's an interesting tension to to have a gifted neighborhood school or gifted programming in a neighborhood school that's strong, that parents also would choose to. And so um I I'm happy if parents finding where their gifted kid fits best, um whether it's a gifted magnet or a neighborhood school.
As long as it's D eleven.
As long as it's D eleven, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep.
Be sure, I know we have one more program and then we'll move to five E's when you're finished.
We do. Yes, so our final presenter this evening is Nicole Girarden. Um I'm not sure of board members, that many of you have met Nicole. You may be aware that Talana Hibkey, who was our CLDE facilitator, retired right before spring break. Um Nicole has been working in our, both in classrooms, CLDE classrooms in our district, as well as in our CLDE office here at Central Administration. And has really um stepped up and helped us out in this gap in time that we have between Talana's retirement and when we hire her replacement. So with that, I will turn it over to Nicole to talk to us about all things CLDE.
Thank you. Good evening, um as Sherry mentioned, my name is Nicole Girarden and I'm a teacher on special assignment. For the culturally and linguistically diverse education office, which we also refer to as the CLDE office. Our mission is to provide high-quality English language development services to our English language learners, so that they are able to achieve English proficiency. Serving our English learners requires a program that is relevant, engaging and supportive. Our schools utilize research-based curriculums and supplemental programs to support English language development or ELD instruction. We are also committed to providing opportunities for general education teachers, so that language learners have access to the best possible first instruction. We also support schools in creating and implementing plans for English learners who might be struggling due to circumstances beyond language development. The CLDE office allocates CLD teachers and CLDEAs to support schools based on a service model. Students who are in the non-English proficient or NEP range need more daily ELD services and so they are weighted more heavily in the staffing model. Students who are in the limited English proficient or LEP range often need less daily ELD services and so are weighted less heavily than NEP students. All of our D eleven schools offer ELD services for qualifying students and so all of our schools have CLD teachers allocated to them. Schools with larger English learner populations may have more than one CLD teacher, while schools with fewer English learners will likely have a half-time CLD teacher. Or some may have a shared CLD teacher with a full-time CLDEA. Currently, the district employs thirty-nine CLD teachers and nineteen CLDEAs. Additionally, we have three CLD community liaisons who are dedicated. Oh no!
I do too.
Just click, click on the PowerPoint and it should disappear.
So updating in nine, it's counting down, it's count downs.
You can continue.
I can continue.
The good news is you all have this global.
Go ahead and continue more one one more.
Sorry.
No, that's right, um so three CLD liaisons dedicated to supporting our non-English speaking families. And then we have our CLDE department coach or a teacher on special assignment who's responsible for supporting um all of our schools and staff members. Okay, looking into our English learner demographics.
Thank you.
Shows that we currently support or service approximately one thousand forty-five identified English language learners. And another eight hundred sixty-five students who are being monitored before being officially exited out of our program. On average, we have between thirty-five and forty different languages spoken by our students in the district with the highest number being Spanish speakers.
Thirty-five to forty.
Yes, sir. High-quality programming starts foundationally with our identification process. Making sure that we have identified the right students to receive English language development services is critical. When students are identified as English language learners, we receive funding from the state through the English Language Proficiency Act as well as Title III funding. We have a rigorous identification process to make sure that we have the right students in the right program, so that we are able to determine best practices and levels of support for each school. To meet the needs of our learners, we start by determining their eligibility for ELD services. During enrollment, parents fill out a home language survey, which tells us if a language other than English is spoken by the student or someone in the home. If another language is present, the student participates in the state's English Language Proficiency Screener exam. And the CLD teacher conducts a parent interview in order to gather additional information about the student's language background. If a student's English proficiency level is not considered proficient, then they are eligible for ELD services. A parent has the right to opt out of ELD ELD services and so we ask them to fill out and sign an English learner services form. Which tells us if they would like to opt in or out of ELD services and the parent has the right to change their options at any time. We know that our English language learners do not always score as well as we would like on standardized assessments, but research tells us that it can take anywhere from three to seven years. For an English learner to become English proficient. And so it is reasonable to expect that newcomer students will not score as high on standardized achievement assessments as their English-only peers. Until they have achieved English proficiency proficiency. But research also shows that once a student is English proficient, they score as well or better than their native English-speaking peers. The CLD office uses the state-required access exam scores to determine if English learners are moving through the stages of second language acquisition. At a rate that we would expect and using this data helps us support students who may need additional instructional support outside of ELD services. When we look at our enrollment trends, we see that there has been a consistent reduction in English learners enrolling in District eleven. For many years, our population stayed stable at around eighteen hundred and fifty students, but over the last few years, we have seen a steady decline in our enrollment. There are a number of reasons that have impacted our population's enrollment, such as higher housing prices in Colorado Springs and stricter border policies. We also saw our English learner parents not enrolling their students due to COVID safety concerns. However, as we see federal policies change around immigration and conflict in other countries continue, we expect to see a rise in our English learner enrollment. We are currently working with Lutheran Family Services and CDE's migrant education program. To create a working partnership in order to determine the best path to serve the increasing number of predicted incoming refugee and migrant students. And I hope this has provided you with an overview.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, so just to get some clarity, you are a TOSA in that department?
I am.
Okay, and the facilitator is retiring?
Has retired.
Oh, already has retired, okay.
We um have posted and interviewed the position and hope to announce a candidate in the next few days.
Okay, but the candidate will be starting?
In August.
In August, okay.
With with the possibility for some temp worker um time over the summer to help transition.
Okay, questions?
I just got one, the the three to five year timeframe, is that pretty typical uh in compared to our, you know, the area?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have a question?
No.
Oh, no you didn't.
I so with our um change that we've seen, your little chart uh twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen and yeah, that one.
Yeah.
Um has our numbers as far as staffing changed also? I mean do if are we thinking about we're gonna need to ramp up our staffing if we do see an increase or?
So currently, the allocation model runs off of service hours based on that non-English proficient, limited English proficient range. Um if we do see an increase, then the allocation will increase um. And then again, the the new facilitator will be able to help facilitate that.
Mm.
Um but yes, they are based on on numbers and um enrollment.
And the uh sorry, I just wanna make sure, the CLD teachers or the E CLDEAs, is that the same as? The English language learner teachers, I'm trying to just make sure I'm using the same verbiage and.
Mm-hmm, CLD is um the new acronym for ELL, so they're the same.
Okay. Okay.
Yes, they they all teach English language.
It's just so much more difficult to say that.
It is, so just slow down.
And if it's difficult for us, I wonder what it is for the English language learners to say it.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yes. And that and that the state is moving towards um using the term multilingual learners also, so you'll see that.
Mm-hmm.
Mu- multilingual?
Multilingual.
So does CLD come from the state?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yes, that was a shift maybe three years ago, not too long, yeah.
Oh, okay. I just wanna say thank you to these two of you, these have been really excellent presentations, just like for me especially being new.
Thanks.
Thanks for all the hard work on this and you did a good job presenting.
Thank you.
Now of all these different um nationalities, do do we know if there are citizens or do we question them, we ask those questions, we don't ask those questions? Well, you know, I was looking, you know, if Farsi, especially Farsi in Mandarin need our high-party languages and if you're an American citizen and speak Farsi in Mandarin. You can start working at about a hundred twenty grand just for speaking the language here.
I know.
Huh?
My dad ripped me off on that.
Didn't need to Farsi?
I wouldn't need Farsi specifically. No, that's a high, high, high-valued language, so I was wondering, yeah.
So um couple of questions from me. You expect the uh students that require that English language service to increase in the next couple of years? You mentioned two re- two or three reasons, one, we are coming out of COVID, two, use our border restrictions with the current administration.
Mm-hmm.
Um the situation in Ukraine, all those?
All of those.
Okay, you expect more more students to come in?
We do.
Okay.
This is based on information from Lutheran Family Services also and um the migrant ed program.
Okay, is there anything then that we are doing proactively to market to those communities? Let them know that District eleven provides a high-quality service for their needs?
Um yes, currently we are in the beginning stages of working on on such a a program with migrant ed and. Um Luanda Clever in.
D eleven Engage?
Thank you, D eleven Engage, in order to work together to reach those families that aren't always um too excited to come into schools or. Uh feel comfortable enough to do that and so migrant ed program facilitates some family engagement nights that we're hoping to collaborate with them on. And so that's our kind of beginning stages for that relationship.
Okay, hopefully we are looking into marketing and maybe that's something you can again tag team, I don't want to add. Extra responsibilities to Miss Ashby's uh this but the marketing coordinator were to reach out to this community and let them know that we have an option out here. Um and when we've been for several years, I don't know how this numbers exactly was eighteen fifty for four years.
Mm-hmm.
Uh right on the dot, but I'm assuming it's an average number out there. But it seems like we've lost about eight hundred students in just three or four years. And maybe there's potential to get those students back.
There is, and then um another reason it's it's dropped a little bit is there there was quite a bit of work with our previous facilitator um in. In ensuring that the right students are in the right program and if language is no longer an academic concern for them. Um especially with our dual-identified students with special ed, uh they've been working on a different pathway that the state has provided us for exiting those students. So that they can get the the services that they really need, whether it be special ed, um GT.
So the metrics changed a little bit too?
Yes, CDE offered a different pathway that allows those students to exit.
There was a suggestion made by um CLDE teacher to me and I'm just passing on that suggestion to you. And the CLDE teacher talked about uh how when students tran- transition from elementary to middle and middle to high school. The students who are challenged in speaking that English language, especially they go to a new environment. Uh completely then or you're getting a completely new student into a new school, into a school. It would really benefit if that student could shadow a student who speaks that same language for a day or two in that school. It would make that student a little bit more comfortable, so that was, I don't know if that's something that happens right now.
Um at some of our schools, based on some of their programs, mostly in the high schools.
Okay, so maybe that's an option where if these students are shy and uh right now they don't feel comfortable, they don't feel welcomed into the schools. Having a student from their same culture or speaking the same language, welcoming them for a day or two. Would help open up, open them up to more responsive into going into that school.
Yes, um thank you.
Interpreters, do we, does that fall under you?
May I take on that one? Um Phoebe Bailey and I actually just met earlier today to talk about translators. Um we do have dollars within our Esr three funds uh to provide for translators for the district. Um Phoebe and I are working together to ensure that we have a an appropriate job description. So that when we hire, we find um people who can provide the services that we need. Obviously, what you saw is this is not just, it's not limited to translators who speak Spanish. Um but we are seeing growing and increasing needs in other languages as well. So Phoebe and I are working to ensure that we approach this in a way that will meet needs not only now, but in future years as well.
So if I can I get this clear, you have a teacher who speaks English and then you have a translator alongside. You don't have a uh a teacher who speaks the given language?
So I'm gonna allow Nicole to talk about the CLD teacher side, the translator would be more for when we hold um parent meetings, conferences, phone calls, yes.
The parent.
Yeah.
Not for classroom instruction.
Okay.
I'll let you speak to that part.
Um being bilingual is not a requirement for a CLD teacher and so some of them are bilingual, some of them not. We, oh, about five currently across the district are bilingual, speak Spanish.
And you you don't have like a a a Farsi-speaking teacher who you you don't have that.
We do not.
So there, I know there are several, especially in Denver, you have several schools are full immersion, Mandarin, um Farsi, uh German, I I I visited those school. And they speak that language throughout the day, they don't even let the kids speak English and they're all English-speaking kids, it's amazing.
Yes, and Rogers Elementary started our dual-language immersion program, which is run under world languages. Um and so those teachers do do the program that you s- speak of, but uh in District eleven, we're in 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 English immersion program. So all of our CLD teachers are English.
Yeah.
You say that we we get some funding from the state, uh is it enough or is it kinda like special education where we're having to kinda subsidize also?
That is a really great question that I'm currently looking into and understanding.
And then yeah, same, like I said before, that what are we gonna do when the Esr money runs out with bringing in translators? Like I just don't wanna set families up for expectations that in two, three years, we can't deliver on anymore, you know, so.
None of this funding is from Esr, just title funding and the Elpa English proficiency.
Um I have another question. Um I have another question, now I don't remember what it is, so go ahead.
So the teachers who have CLD certification, do they need to take some kind of class or endorsement or something to get that?
They do have an endorsement um through C D E, the CLDE endorsement. Um and then general ed teachers are um now required to have forty-five hours of CLD um credits in order to renew their teaching license. So hopefully, we'll get more CLD endorsed teachers that way.
I think I remember you presented at an accreditation meeting, a DAC accreditation meeting, I think it was you. And you were speaking about um just challenges of like a math teacher teaching a child that is Spanish speaking and uh struggling to find translators. So I was thinking about it after the fact, do we ever partner with our students, especially like Spanish is a language we t- we teach? And give it offering credit to help fellow students that English isn't their first language and they come alongside and help translate the math?
Uh like in a tutor sort of situation?
Yeah.
Some of our high schools do 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 that and and those students are in um a general ed content class like math and they earn elective credits for that.
Awesome, yeah, I'm just trying to think outside the box. If we can't find translators, well, we're teaching kids right now and, you know, you know, that'd be a great experience too.
Hmm.
Yes, the and the students seem to really like it and so they're, it seems to be a good program.
Yeah, that's cool.
Do the ELL students also take a s- different state test?
Um the WEDA access test is the state test that we're required to administer um every January and we just got scores back Monday.
And?
And and we're still going through them, so I'm.
So they don't take the CMAS, is it?
They do take the CMAS, they also take the WEDA access.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay, so when they take that CMAS testing, is that in the same test that the si- let's say sixth grade student, with the sixth grade student that's normal, whatever it is, student and the the in ELL learner, do they take the same test?
For the most part, there are some exemptions for um newcomer students, having been only in the country for a certain amount of time are exempt. Um there are some accommodations for translation.
Okay.
An extended time, but otherwise, they do take the test. There is also an alternate test that the the students that take the co-alt, um take the WEDA alt.
Okay, great, good information to know. It's it's a challenge when these students are learning English, but they aren't there proficient with the English learners who have, you know, but they have to take the same test at the.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
And eventually, it's an asset to them when they are multilingual and get into six-figure incomes.
Yes.
Right, and and once they become proficient, they seem to outperform.
Yes.
That's what your.
Yeah, correct.
I seem to say.
Same or better.
Yeah?
Love that.
Great, thank you, any further questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah.
We are not going to have an update on um the world languages or what, today we are not having?
I was not aware that that was part of the request, we could certainly.
No, I didn't, but I I just.
Okay.
I didn't know that.
No, it wasn't a request or anything.
Okay.
Maybe uh Branton can quickly tell the board how the dual language immersion program is looking for the next year now that we are completing year one and going to year two across there.
Sure, uh so as as we, when we, when we talked about budget modifications, we did do a combination class in first and second grade. Uh so that class now has, I believe, over twenty-two students registered for it. Um our incoming kindergarten class for DLI actually has more students registered than than the traditional English classes at this point. Um so we expect that to be uh a much more
Thank you.
uh robust kindergarten class than we experienced this year, since now we've had a year to build up some momentum around the program and get um some marketing out.
You're talking about the incoming kindergarten?
Yes.
Okay, do you have any kind of numbers on?
I think right now we're at twelve students already.
Okay. Good.
Which for this time of year is is super strong.
Great, okay, thank you.
I just visited Rogers this week and the first graders were reading to me in Spanish and the teacher was just talking to them in Spanish and they were talking back to her and understood every, it was amazing, it was amazing.
It it is a really impressive program.
Yeah.
Well, that's what D eleven does, good, amazing.
We just gotta get the word out.
Okay, um so we're done with this part, going on to, does the board need a five-minute recess kind of break? And then we can go on to five essentials, what's the board consensus on it or do you want to go on to five essentials or the?
I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Keep going?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay.
Five essentials.
Sure, and and I'm gonna let David take this over, but I know that you did receive the flip, is it, is it the right terminology? So hopefully, you've had an opportunity to review that, cause Davis is not going to go through a lengthy presentation more than just maybe accept and answer questions and so forth. Are you ready on target?
Correct.
This was our our plan, so maybe David just give you a five-minute overview?
Yeah.
And then we'll go ahead and take some questions.
So really, the big takeaway that I wanted to uh one wanted you all to leave tonight was was an understanding of what the five E is at some level of depth of what the essential is and what the measure is, uh what the measures are under each essential. And then I think I've shared in the past what each individual item is under each measure. And sometimes that's not totally intuitive, so hopefully, if that's not clear, I wanna follow up with that. Cause that's pretty important to remember, um the essentials give us that broad level, but really are are planning. So when we think symposium planning and whatnot, um think at the measure level. Um so hopefully, you you were able to see those trends across school, wanted to give you really the emphasis being at the school level. Um and then just before I open it up to questions, at the district level, which I didn't speak to on the video, um across the district, math instruction was our was our biggest gain, plus fourteen points. So I think that's really encouraging, it's an area that we definitely need uh to keep pushing on. Collaborative practice was another one, our our biggest drops across the district, I think are interesting because I think they're reflective of our of our movement back into normal school as COVID conditions change. Um I hesitate to say post-COVID, cause I don't wanna jinx anything, but as we move into more kinda normal operating procedure, our student peer relationships was the biggest drop district-wide. Um teacher safety, which you actually saw, I think I pulled out an example of that, um at at individual schools, teacher safety was our biggest drop. And then peer support, so kinda this, it feels like kinda this social emotional um engagement and interaction. It's we're we're seeing, we're seeing just residual effects. Um and then I hope hopefully slide twenty made sense to you about the three features correlated to growth. Um so within our own data, that is, that is, those are district data, those are our own data, so we can use those for planning purposes. Um so with that broad overview in mind, I just wanna open it up to questions and any um concerns or observations that you might have related to what I gave you.
Just since you referenced that slide twenty, I was just curious, what exactly is are the questions that were being asked? Cause it was the students, right?
Right.
Provided that information? So um I was just curious how we gather that?
So for student, those are student items from the student survey. So two versions of the survey go out of teacher survey and student, and so when they say a stu- those are student items, those are answers from the student perspective. Um so do you have one?
Somehow, there's a question being asked that then tells us academic e- eh engagement is high?
Correct, so there it's actually, it's actually, I think, four or five individual items that talk about uh engagement of their peers in classrooms.
Oh.
So so in my classroom, uh peers take uh take homework seriously is one example.
Okay.
Another one is they take a classroom discussion seriously, and so then they're they're agreeing or disagreeing within those individual items.
I remember, it's been a while since I looked at the questions themselves, but I remember one of them asked about teacher, how much does your teacher focus their time on the kids that are doing well? I don't remember how it was worded. Um and it just struck me that there wasn't a question of how much does your teacher spend time with the kids misbehaving? Like that wasn't in the survey and so is that survey uh uh set? Or can we, you know, at at a later point, we realize there maybe is a a missing question that we would like to dig at, can we add that in?
That's a, it's an interesting question, yeah, we we can add items. Um what we don't get with adding items is the normed uh normed ex- expected value.
Yeah, from history. Yeah.
But yeah, we, within our contract, we can add items.
Okay, I was just thinking about, especially cause we know behavior has been such a challenge after COVID. It struck me that that was not a question that was asked, that um to just get a metric on that.
Yeah, and that question comes up, why is it asked this way or why is it in this frame of reference or why is it reverse coded, things of that nature? And that all comes out of that research model, it's, they've just found a kinda item, it's called item reliability. So when you ask this question this way and you ask a group of questions that you theoretically think those are those those answers should kinda grouped together, do they actually do that?
Hmm.
And so they run mo- multiple factor analyses. And uh sometimes it's in the way that the question is worded
Yeah.
that just kicks it out of that group or that brings it back into the group and your theoretical framework holds true or not, so. So it's 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 behind, like, like I said, I think it's a, it's a really robust model, but yeah, to your point, we can add items.
Yeah, I just thought it was interesting, we're asking about teachers focus on kids doing like star pupil in the classroom, getting attention from the teacher, but not the misbehaving kids. Why aren't we asking that?
So you 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 said, I can't try to get my, the whole process, trying to look at the big picture, I don't want it too deep, to get confused. But you you can't, you contract with this to to do this five E, right? And you don't implement it, you have others implement this for you, is that correct?
What do you mean by implement?
Well, I know you're over it, but but who who who's doing the the grunt work?
Uh s- s- okay, so I'll just walk through the process and then you can you can identify where that. Um so our contract with five E is that we can use their tools, so we can use their items.
Okay, now I.
And then we have a contact at five E who who makes sure that the links, cause it's all online, the links are live, we're sending them to the right people and it's active at email addresses, so. So my data office clean uh works very closely with all schools to get a list of all student emails and a list of all active teacher emails. And and to make sure that it's it's instructional staff, um cause it's, cause it's all classroom-based. So we make sure we do that, we send that, we send that list file to five E, they generate the links, they send out the notice to say, hey, five E is open, take it, and then they monitor the participation rates.
Okay.
And then we get back all those, all those data um dashboards that you saw are generated by five E. We also though get a flat file, meaning it's an Excel file, it's a beautiful thing.
Oh.
Rows of data that give us all of those at the school level, each each individual major scale score. What that allows us to do is merge it to other local data, so that's how I got um the feature importance. So I merged it with our with our Galileo data to see when when schools are scoring in this range, what does that mean for passing rates?
Oh.
So we can do all sorts of things, when we get, when we get our uh discipline data cleaned up, we can layer on discipline data, we can layer on other pieces. That's really nice from a vendor perspective to do that, to give us that flat file, gives us a lot more potential, so.
Oh, okay.
Does that answer your question?
No, that's exactly what I'm trying to figure, how do you do this? You know, how do you gra- grab all the, that's a lot of stuff in there.
It is a lot.
You know, and I'm looking and I like the way it was presented, cause I can understand it. But I didn't wanna know how, I didn't wanna know exactly how to get everything. But yeah, that broad gives me a good view.
Good.
Real good, thank you.
Are you aware of any other school districts that do the five essentials?
In Colorado?
In Colorado or?
I'm not in Colorado.
Okay.
That's a good question, I should look that up. Um uh it's very widespread in Illinois, that's kinda where it was generated, uh Texas is using it to a large degree.
Okay.
Oregon is using it and I don't know about.
I'll look that up.
It's a good question.
Jason.
I appreciated slide eight, the technical core, which is the glacier we see above the waterline versus the social base. I think sometimes we we like to ask questions and focus on the teaching and learning performance side of it, you know, um but the social base is also the underlying piece, I think Director Daniel also spoke to it and in prior meetings of just, you know, hey, this is the outcome we wanna see, it's what we see on the surface, but we do also want to, you know, and I've mentioned, I think in the past, that every one of our employees is is a marketing mouthpiece of our district. And if we don't have that trust and commitment in, you know, everybody from the, you know, from kitchen worker to facilities to E D S Ls, um you know, that that hinders how how much of the technical core above the surface can can pop up basically, so.
Hmm.
Uh they're connected, so I just appreciate you explaining that, um and I I like that visual. Uh as far as the feedback goes, I I watched your video and then I have the PDF out here, but is anything hyperlink in here for us to be able to dive into the actual school data? Or was that sent somewhere separate, I I only saw the video and then the the PDF, did I miss something?
No, I I don't have any live hyperlinks.
Okay, I didn't know if you're like, you can dive into the individual data if you wanted, so I didn't know if that was, you click on it and you go to that school or if it was just the slides uh thirteen through seven, eighteen or so.
Yeah.
So that's that's great, so, all right, thank you.
So a question, who, students took this this time, right?
Students take it every, each time.
Oh, every time, okay, it's parents that have been added.
Correct.
In the last year or so, okay. Um when I I spoke to some students today and they, I asked them about taking surveys and they had some interesting feedback, which was, one, they're unsure about how anonymous it is and especially in the school setting and they wanted to know why they were taking it and how the data was gonna be used. And I don't know if we can share that with them, but if we don't, it might be worth sharing in the future.
Yeah.
Like this is what it says about, you know, maybe not you as a child, but your school and how it would inform us and and
Providing resources.
What they might see as a result of bothering uh for us to take their time.
Yeah.
So just a thought for you.
I love that idea, yeah, I, that is communicated, I don't know if it's communicated in student student engaging language though.
Yeah, I I think we probably, even for adults, we're all very busy, right, and.
We skipped us for a few slides just to get to the survey, right?
Yeah, sometimes, you know, sometimes it's, you might have to repeat, obviously, like, well, in case you showed up to class late or you, you know, if if you didn't read it in one way, maybe to be reworded, you would understand it anyway, you you know how it is.
Hmm.
Um so anyway, just some
That's a great point.
Food for thought.
Yeah.
Obviously, different for different levels.
Yeah.
So on slide um nineteen, where you talked about what, to what degree did results change in response to strategy? Um I was just looking through kind of the broader category, I'm trying to find now the correspondence. Uh four, where it's ambitious instruction, effective leaders, collaborative teachers, supportive environment, involve families. So on that slide nineteen, you identified where our biggest um decrease and I just was noticing that three of the five categories were under collaborative teachers. And I know that we drill down at the school level to um that it's uh very much on, at the school level to identify where we wanna work on things, how how are we gonna improve? But since we saw at a district level that three of those five categories were also, yeah, that collaborative teachers, I was just curious, like, will we zoom out at a district level also to say, okay, what are we gonna do at a higher level to help improve the specific, cause yeah, three of the five were in that one category?
I love that question, that that's an exciting question, I would say that, again, reminding that we're in the first cycle of the ONE plan and all that symposium work, we are learning the process and the best way to communicate how to get an underlying uh root causes or or contributing factors. And I would say this is the primary area where we have the most to grow in that, so I'll give you an example, when on most ONE plans, there is something about um collaborative teachers, growing collaborative teachers. The plan or the major improvement strategy to do that is to get teachers to collaborate. So to put them in situations where they're going to collaborate or put them in a PLC where they're going to collaborate. Okay, that's that's a step, but really, that's looking at the, like, we're having an issue with with collaborative teachers. But let's take a hike upstream and see what is causing or underlying, or that underlying causing. There's there's could be some issues of trust in a building, there could be some, there could be a uh, schism between the veteran teachers and the young teachers. There could be all sorts of different, you know, in uh, adult environment questions. That then when we say, okay, we're gonna get you to colla- be more collaborative by collaborating, is not the best approach.
Well, and.
We're going to get you there by getting, but yeah, you could actually cause a few more problems. We're going, we're going to work on this together, really engaging with trust.
Well, and like, school commitment was one of those, and so like, teachers are deeply committed to the school, and so it's not just necessarily. You know, me and Parth working together, but also that bond they feel with the school they're in, or you know, it was cool, I was. Um, collective responsibility, school commitment, and collaborative practices, so yeah, there's lots there.
Yeah, so to to your, to your second part of your question, district resources, I would say this is the real power of Tanya Nash, Tanya Nash's work. And really helping principals understand, and the E D S Ls would be able to speak to this more better, uh, much better. But being, helping principals really give pe- feedback that's actionable, or immediately actionable. That's tied to a specific thing that they saw, like, that's generating, that's a process of generating trust within within a building. So I would say that work is is vital, vital to seeing changes in in that collaborative teaching. And to the to the school commitment, when we have a school with a leader leader who is laser focused, I think I said this in the video. Then then positive things happen there, and it can be a super dynamic, loud, big leader that does that. It could be a leader that's more subdued and just sets a vision, but that school is about, everybody knows what that school is about. That is critical.
And so, is it then like, the E D S Ls that hold that principal accountable of, hey, you're in the red on this one plan? And yes, we're having our, what's it called, this summer?
Uh, symposium, one plan symposium.
Symposium. Um, this summer, and you're gonna come up with your plan, but who then is holding whoever accountable throughout the year? To make sure that we are making gains.
Well, you hit the nail on the head, it is the E D S L responsibility, and they have to track and monitor that as well. And they too have to continue to provide that continued feedback to principals based on their observations, based on what they uh, hear. From a variety of sources, and so that's part of what they do when they conduct their school visits. They walk the school, they look, they observe, they listen, they they look at children, work with children, work with staff, and gain that information, and then. They in turn will work with principals during their observation periods, but also during their their pre and mid and end of the year evaluations. And go over those kinds of things, and each of the principals have established goals, and some of those goals are based on the five E data, which makes. I don't wanna say your job is easy, but it makes their job easier to have data in front of them that they can use to actually talk to principals about. Then they also are responsible for monitoring and tracking the 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 one plan, uh, the supposed, the one plan symposium work. And what are those actual items that should be in place with the school improvement plans? One of the things I shared with the principals today, when I shared my own observations and what we can do to strengthen. Is that, you know, much like district office staff, we have plans, we have work breakdown structures and so forth that we should be tracking and monitoring. But when you begin to implement your school improvement plan with your staff and community, you too have an objective, but you also have a plan. That has a work breakdown structure, and that's what they look for, and they look for to see if we're on target with doing what we say we're going to do. And then they may have, with some objectives, have some measures that they're gonna work out along the way to see if they're red. Whoops, we've gotta do something, yellow, we're making progress, but still some correction is needed, or green, we're right on target. And that's pretty much what what their role is, in addition to all the hiccups that come up each and every day.
Right.
Some hiccups can be serious, and some hiccups are are hiccups.
Yeah.
But uh, but then they have plans based on those too, this data is valuable to to inform their work and and to inform the work. I, when we listened to the presentation, I asked David here to find a five essentials for central office. It's such a tool, and it's just out there that we could do a.
Yeah. Perometrics? For five. Perometrics to a degree, yeah.
Well, so I'm looking forward, cause you you're finding, like, you know, you're finding areas, I've got, you know, cases, you're finding them. I'm looking forward to the when you have the exact focusing on that, like, colla- colla- collaboration, you don't make them collaborate, but you. You talk about collaboration more, you teach about collaboration more, and.
Why aren't we collaborating?
Yeah, and you at the top top of the conversation and hoping that it could, but when, if you find that area. And he and that begin, the process begins, I'm looking to see how much it affects the aggregate of our of our grades. And when that happens, and everybody sees it, everyone, everybody wants to win. So when that happens, and people begin to see it, I mean, I think the potential for that is, you can't even measure right now, we don't know what it's gonna do. And and that's how I look at it, and that that's just one area, if there's other areas, well, it's different. So each each director, each principal could address that in a general form without rebuking everybody, getting mad at them if they hate them. And and it just begins to mushroom, I I I just see the potential in that.
Yeah, I agree. It also gives a school an opportunity to own own their story, uh, because this is all developmental. Each school is gonna have different weak weak areas and different strong areas, really challenging to adjust the weak, cause the weak is gonna pull down everything, right? But that that is part of your story as a community, as a school, we are approaching this, looking at underlying causes that we think. That we think, the people in the building think are the underlying causes, we're gonna take these on and move them, move them forward. Did it work the first time? Maybe we learned, right? But it's the school that's doing that, and it's within the community, and it's their own story. That struggle, those conversations are really a treatment unto themselves. To simply have a conversation about what is the nature of our school that is causing us to not trust each other well? I mean, you'd probably do it in more nuanced language, I suppose, but that conver- simply having that conversation is a treatment. Yeah, yeah, so it's it's exciting to have that opportunity, and I do just wanna give a a real big shout out to the E D S Ls and the way that they approach these conversations. I think you guys do a fantastic job of really, really pushing our building le- building leaders to those underlying causes. As opposed to just saying, hey, this is low, this is red, this is green, like, these are helpful, these are helpful, but these are not the ultimate, right? The ultimate is to say, what do you think the underlying cause is, so I know like. Brian, we've worked on a couple of projects, I mean, all of us have had these conversations, and we meet on a regular basis within data labs to really look at how this plays out across different data sets, so. So I just wanna give a shout out to your your work as you as you're doing it. I get a little excited.
Well, um, for me, it's really exciting to see when this data, five essentials data aligns with. The spring data that you showed from Galileo K Troop assessment, and one shining example out there is Queen Palmer. Queen Palmer stands off the chart in five essential, and it seems to mirror that in the spring data that you, uh, all five greens, and. They were off the chart out there too, so, something out there at Queen Palmer is working, they have found that secret sauce, so to speak. So how can we now collaborate with schools, whatever Queen Palmer is doing? And if I, if I'm right, Queen Palmer is also a title school, so it's uh, uh, challenging demographic of students. And that's not holding them down, okay, they've found.
Maybe the E D S L that school could speak to that.
Sure.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, sure.
Do you wanna come to the small?
Sure?
Okay. Um.
Just when the, just what your observations are, you know, and and where you see areas where we could duplicate. So, I mean, obviously, it's gonna be the 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 dynamic leader in that building, right? But there, maybe are there processes or or actions or accountability benchmarks that that leader has built in that we could say. We like that, and let's pilot it into other schools, like, I think we've talked about before, but yeah.
Yeah, so for sure, um, Christina at Queen Palmer has some strong systems in place, she utilizes um, what's called embedded P L Cs. So she's at P L Cs every Tuesday, and they do them all day long on Tuesdays, different grade levels meet at different times, she's there. Um, they do vertical um, team meetings and um, horizontal team meetings as well, so the staff is always talking to each other about the data. Um, they are looking at data every single week in their P L Cs, and they're making adjustments to instruction based on that data. And they've got a strong planning format that they utilize in their P L Cs. So she's just really strategic on how she utilizes the P L C work. And um, she has a very trusting relationship with her staff, which is another piece to the puzzle, to the magic sauce. Is um, she's, you know, it's a smaller school, so it's been a little bit easier for for her to build those strong relationships and get those things moving in the right direction because of that. Um, she, the some other leadership actions is she's just um, dynamic at getting community partnerships and grants, and so. She has a lot of support from the community in regards to that. Um, I, one of the things that Tanya Nash and her team is doing is um, working with um, curriculum and instruction and doing what's called learning walks, and. Um, tomorrow, we're doing a learning walk at Queen Palmer and at Jenkins Middle Schools to start to provide um, the the district. Departments with a look into what Queen Palmer and what Jenkins are doing. Um, and then the district teams are gonna start coming up with plans, um, to your point of how do we spread that? Plans on how they can support the rest of the schools in figuring out how to embed some of those practices. I do wanna also stress that um, you know, is is, we do find pockets of success like at Queen Palmer, and Jenkins is another one. It we, it's more than just taking what's happening and implementing it in another school. Cause what's happening at Queen Palmer might not be successful at another school, so it's figuring out. Um, what practices, what specific practices are in place, and what the other schools need that they're missing. Um, to support those practices, um, because that's the, that's the important piece. Sometimes student population obviously is very different, um, the logistic.
What about teacher ages?
Teachers what?
Their age.
Um. It did, teacher age, we don't look at teacher age, we look at teacher, um.
Well, I'm I'm, I look at, whoever, you can survive somebody in your soldier who you're getting for their their doctor, uh, their thesis, it's a great project. Because I would be curious, me, looking at the ages of teachers and the sus- school schools, if there's a correlation, I don't know. Of of teacher ages in correlation to acceptance of this kind of program.
So you know what we do look at, at is years of experience that teachers have, and so.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I meant, not.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah, we look at years of experience, and yeah, definitely, there's, there's some dynamic teachers that have three years of experience, and there's others that have twenty. Um, so that is a part of um, some of the data that we look at for sure.
So when you talk about the learning walks that you're going to go on, is it, isn't that what you're setting it tomorrow?
Yes.
Is that just the E D S Ls going on this?
No, no, it um, it's also the curriculum and instruction team.
Okay.
Um, that provide push and supports to schools. So we're gonna be going and seeing what exactly is happening in some of those classrooms, and Christina will be able to give us an overview of her practices.
Does that tie into the interrelator reliability piece too?
Yes. Yes.
Where we're trying to update kind of our evaluation system?
Yep.
Is kind of the end goal of all this, so we can coach teachers better?
It is perfect for the.
Okay.
The other key to Queen Palmer is Christina was trained as a TAP teacher, and a TAP facilitator. Um, and so she's got extensive knowledge in instructional practices, and how to give feedback and all of those pieces. And so that's another plus to what's happening at Queen Palmer, she's got that training herself.
I do like TAP.
And I fully understand what you're saying, what happens at one school may not completely translate into another school. But something is working in that one school, and I'm not talking only about Queen Palmer here, when I look at it. What jumps out is Chipita, Edison, Bristol, Jenkins that you m- mentioned, Achieve Online, Rudy, Keller, Odyssey Echo. Taylor, Henry, these are schools, there are some dynamic principals out there, and what David was talking about out there. All these schools, when I look at it, what's common in between them, it's a strong leader with a clear laser focus vision at the very top. And clarity in communication to the staff, ability to not only motivate that staff, but also to be that instructional leader in that building. And setting that building culture, there's something that's happening out there, and we have a lot of new principals coming in here. This next year, right now, first year principals that are coming in, uh, from being promoted, from assistant principals are taking it. From other school districts, it would be a valuable learning experience for these principals too, to be maybe have a mentor. With one of these principals that are working, so they can, when they have questions, they can pick up the phone and ask. The Rudy principal, or the Keller principal, or the Chipita principal, can you help me with this? Instead of having to throw them at the deep end of the pool and having to try to figure that out themselves, it seems like it's a constant struggle. For these first and second year principals, and I know you guys are doing a remarkable job, but you also have ten, twelve schools. Just providing that support for these first year principals and second year principals, it's going to be so critical to set them up for success.
It's one of the things um, I've talked about with the D S Ls, following interviews and vacancies and filling them, and we had it with Brian today. But we haven't finished the conversation with the group as a team. One of the things we've recognized, and I think I know as a leader myself, is that assigning Parth to be Nick's mentor doesn't always work. What really works is when Nick finds his own manner, mentor, and tells his boss who his mentor is. Because that's what a mentor relationship is, and when you assign it, it doesn't always happen. But what a boss can do is assign a coach to work with Nick, first year principal, especially for the first semester of the school year. And then several times following that, and provide the coaching that's necessary to strengthen, enhance. Uh, those leadership competencies that are needed in order to be successful, based on some of the information within the five E data. Based on leadership companies that are contained within the evaluation form, and we're going to find a way next year. For all of our first year principals to have a coach for the first semester moving forward. We use coaches now to support needs that exist out in schools. Uh, something, something occurs, something happens, and and it's, the E D S L can't be there every single day, every minute of every day. But but we do have coaches that we can hire part time to come in and support a principal's efforts in a um. Developing a a schoolwide discipline plan that's enforceable, that that is fair, that is consistent. And that all teachers and everyone can buy into and work forward, so we are going to look at that model for next year and have something in place. Uh, because providing good coaching makes a world of difference.
Perfect.
And having your own mentor makes even a bigger difference, and and several of us talk about our mentors who we have. No one told me that David was gonna be my mentor, my mentor became the person that I selected and worked with. And to be quite honest with you, two of my mentors became people who came in and said, I'm gonna mentor you. That's where mentorship really pays off, but coaching is gonna be the key, and that's gonna be really, the coach is going to be able to help.
The mechanics.
Spearhead, yeah, to not allow certain things to happen, because someone's there coaching you to make sure that it doesn't happen. So we are working on, and I glad, I appreciate that question, because the five E data drives what we can do with a coaching model in our district.
Great, uh, I mean, it's coach, then that's that's fine, it doesn't, and then the principal can find their own mentor. Uh, as they proceed along, West Elementary and Midland, just observations that I want to make. That that out there now indicates that, at least the five essential data indicates that they are poised for success. And potentially come out under the state clock, would you say that, David?
Um, I.
Because both are, I think one came out, came out from under the, or maybe.
Midland came, Midland was upgraded last year, or the request to reconsider, okay, so if they do it again, they'll be off.
They will be off, but this looks promising for both schools. West West Elementary and Midland, does it look promising according to the five essentials?
I think, I.
We hope so.
I I think so, yeah.
Okay. Okay, couple of other observations that I wanna make, um, uh, at the middle school level, that's where I was really concerned about, okay? When I look at Holmes, Swigert, Russell, Saban, Mann, all these schools showed double digit drop in just about every essential. Is there a reason? Is there a reason we see that kind of drop uh at middle school level? Is this something related to? Students returning back, is that the student behavior issues? I mean, that's alarming to me where you have that kind of double-digit drop. I'm talking about minus twenty-three, minus twenty-five in just about every category out there.
You know, and I don't think that's a, uh, middle schools.
Middle schools.
I don't think that's a question we can just answer tonight, but the EDSL's have to work with each one of their principals. And identify the root cause within each one of their schools, cause it could be different from each school. So give us an opportunity to finish that conversation. I think that would be something worth bringing back to share with you those identified causes in those middle schools. Cause I think tonight at the table, we would just be giving you assumptions if we don't have our data to do that. But that's, that's a good question, and that's part of what will happen when we go to the One Plan Symposium as well. Is that we'll have this data in front of us and identify what it is that we need to put in place. And before they put that in place, they too have to have identified the root cause. That's a good question.
Great, I mean, uh, but I just wanted to throw that observation out there, that that there is something going on out there at the middle schools. But maybe we need to keep an. Maybe we need to keep an eye on, uh, the last question or things. The observation that I wanted to point out was the three AMP schools that are coming in front of the board next week. For approval of the AMP pathway, particularly Columbia, Martinez, and McAuliffe. Each one of them, according to the five essential data, say that they are not organized or um partially organized. So when the five essential data says that they are not organized or partially organized. Adding an AMP pathway and the workload that comes with us, with that on that staff, is that a cost for concern at this point in time?
Brandon, do you and Sherry wanna take that?
And I'll, I'll add into that, cause I'm looking at the data, uh, mid-year uh comparison. Not mid-year, end-of-year comparison, twenty-one to twenty-two, and both like Columbia and Martinez dropped. Or they had negative growth, like, like almost five to seven percent, and so, just additional concern.
Sure. Uh I think what I would say is, is something that Dr. K has elevated that, that I've also heard from the board is. The importance of an instructional vision, um and unifying a staff behind a vision. Uh and so I think in a way, uh, a pathway gives the school an opportunity to find itself. And find its vision so that there is a unifying thing, because according to the five E data, some of those schools need that. Um and it is, it is split about what they're, what they're about at that school. Um and so that's why the very first thing that we are doing with all of our AMP pathway schools in September of next year is doing a vision, a vision development process. So that now we say, as a collective staff, this is, this is what our instructional focus is, this is what we're going to be about. Now let's build systems and structures around that. Um, so ob- obviously, we didn't know that, right? We didn't have the five essential data. Um but but I think it reinforces the need for that work very early on. Uh that that any school can't just take on this program, I think, kind of regardless of their five E data, can't take it on and assume. That it's not going to be a lot of work. Uh and so I I'm I'm hopeful that that this process. That you will see significant change in their five E data when we're two years down the road and we've identified that vision and we're all. Uh kind of hands on deck towards a a focus area, because we know that that's so critical. The schools that are doing the best at that um already have that. And so we, we need to do that with our AMP pathos schools.
Without a vision.
Agree with all of. I'm sorry?
Where there's no vision, the people perish. Heard that somewhere.
I would agree with all of that, and I think it also speaks to the need for um next year being our planning year.
It'll be preaching.
I think if we were to drop pathway programming into any of our sites, um and especially the two that you've mentioned. Without the opportunity for this planning year, which allows for things like the strategic visioning process. Um allows for staff to really come together and and decide what they believe in this, this pathway programming and how they want to accomplish that. In partnership with us at the district level. Um if we didn't have that planning year, um I would also be very nervous about. An impact on on schools that may not be where they want to be from a performance perspective right now.
I think something else too, I I'm I'm asked David, cause I briefly asked him, David, can you explain what not organized means? On on the data point, it's it's a data label, but what does not organized mean?
So I'll start from the, from the top, and I I meant to put this in the video actually, or the screencast, and I forgot. But when a school is um well organized or organized, it means they are strong in at least two of those essential places. What that means operationally is that. A school that can maintain that is free from a strong leader influencing it, right? They have systems in place in that school that will produce results and and create a healthy, healthy environment for both students and teachers. It's not tied to any one outlying reason, i.e. one strong leader. Where they're neutral or partial moderately organized, it's kind of a coin flip. You'll see some gains, you'll see some losses, but it's not. There's still some key pieces that are still pulling down, pulling down that effort a little bit. When they are partially organized or not yet organized, it means they have one weak area, which that's the critical metric right there. If you have one weak area, you reduce your chances of improvement by ten, by to less than ten percent. Like those odds are not good. So you, that one weak area pulls eh all the, all the positive work down. So that's what the, that, the the colors and the designations mean. When you look at those five essentials and how a student experiences their school, that that school is strong or very strong in at least two of those areas. Does that make sense?
Yeah, you know, you know what I call that? I I call it, um, e- every person in position needs a drop dead packet. They, what do you mean? I go, if you were to drop dead, can I put somebody here and it'll still run?
It's not, it's not depend on any one, one.
Right, and and one cock, and so, and everybody has, is required to make a drop dead packet. They laugh at me, I go, hopefully nobody drops dead, but you get my point. But once you have that system that you're talking about and you're coordinated, you could put a new teacher there. And she'll be, she'll know, cause the system's there, she just gotta, she gets, she gets the script and she's now her turn to do the role. And uh, that's what it sounds like to me.
That's a good, yeah, that's exactly what, that's summarize it well. The principal is the, is the, is the key catalyst there, to keep that in place.
I just, it it makes me personally nervous that we're voting next week on these schools. And I don't wanna crush anybody's hopes and dreams, my own kids go to one of these schools. So I know there's a lot invested and a lot of hope um to become a pathway school, but. Uh it does make me nervous that we are putting more, more pressure on the staff. To learn a new thing when there are already some issues there. And I I agree that vision is probably partially that, but there are other pieces to the puzzle too that. That maybe needs to be worked out. And I I just, I don't wanna put more on people's plates, more stress. That's just my personal fear.
Think one thing too, keep in mind that schools, you correct me guys, cause I'm new to, schools that are. Selected as pathway schools had a strong desire and commitment to want to be one. Therefore, the, the work or the volume that could potentially change or the structures could potentially change or structures that are welcomed. Because there is a level of commitment from staff. I think a takeaway that I'm taking that I'm going to want to talk to David about is the timing by which we do all of this. And if we do want to use the five E data to reflect upon when making decisions. Then it all needs to be done in alignment with each other. One can't be done here and done here, if that is a part of, of a criteria that needs to take place. But I, I can't tell you that I think that would be. That that's something I think that I would like to talk to staff about, whether or not. That data point should be something when selecting a pathway. Because I think they, they're, they're the, they're not the same, but they are the same in relationship to the work that we have to do.
They overlap.
So I think I'd like to take that back as a takeaway and have a conversation about what should criteria points be? Because I don't think currently five E data is a, a criteria for a pathway.
That's correct.
And so that would be something that we could go back and talk about. But at the same time, I I think you've got that level of enthusiasm at the schools as witnessed by all of those. People from the schools that came here last week, or the last board meeting, they were all here. They're ready to go.
Yeah.
But uh, but I think the caution to them would be, and this would come from the EDSL. Is that, you know, like Brandon was saying, let's start the year with unpackaging the vision. But also let's take a look at this, to these data points to make sure that they don't impact the success of our pathway. And so you ask yourself the question, what could go wrong?
Right.
Did I identify the risk? Get the mitigating actions and all those things that you have to put in place, I'm sorry, to mitigate the risk? And I think those are the kinds of things that we could potentially do at these uh, these selected schools, or maybe we should do it at all schools. So that's, that's something I think we'll take back as a takeaway.
You know how I see it?
Right, guys?
I see when they came in, all those p- teachers came in, I think inadvertently, they were, they were given a vision. And so they actually met that five E metric, cause now they have a vision, they were all excited for it. Everybody's a vision. So now that, I think it, it would be, it would be a benefit to let, you know, to let them go, because if they were lacking the vision. Now they got a vision. And sometimes all people need a vision. And I think that was evident when they came in.
I think also it's, it's giving the schools the opportunity to put this vision that they want to have.
Right.
In action.
Yeah.
That's absolutely what, and I think that's what I think Brandon was saying, but I think Brandon's point that I heard is they have to collectively define it.
Yeah.
Before they begin to move forward. And the beauty about the pathway, my opinion with observation. Is that you're not going to be a pathway next year. You have a planning year with further research and development to strengthen your implementation the following year. So all of these cautions that were identifying should be worked through the planning year, and there'll be different ones for each of the individual schools. So that after they've done their planning year, then when they go to implement, maybe we'll see stronger five E data. For one thing, at the end of the planning year, but more importantly, we might see some actions that will mitigate the risk of what we know. So that they're successful with what they're going to deliver to the kids. And again, it's up to the EDSL to track and monitor that. And that was a part of what Brandon did before dropping them, before Sherry became an interim. Brandon, that was, that was really where his focus was, when Sherry, that we divvied out the schools and did things differently, so. We will be able to have that laser attention next year, resources delivered next year.
Yeah.
Uh when we finalize all of the other positions that we have. And it, and it's necessary, and that's the monitoring and tracking piece, I think that you were talking earlier about Parth too, or or maybe you were, and I, I don't remember.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that the staff has the supports that they need as they are trying to learn this new thing. There's, you know, obviously, hopefully gonna be grace as they are, but that the systems. It makes me nervous that there are some shaky foundations to begin with. Yes, vision, but there's, like I said, other pieces to the puzzle. There's some, some things that maybe we need to work on besides just vision. That the staff have the systems, the supports, um, the leadership. Collaborative, working, all of those things uh that, there's just a lot to tackle at a couple of these schools. And I I wanna make sure that we're setting them up for success. And if we're doing this to um increase enrollment and increase student achievement. That we're gonna see that and not just be kind of. Throwing more on and it just not going well, so.
Dr. Nelson, if I may, I I I hear your concerns. Uh I I definitely do, and I, and I, I think. I I hear you when you say more on, it definitely comes with more support, right? Um that's, that that's what the academic master plan is really designed to do, which is to to focus supports in specific areas. Uh the, the, the vision part is obviously not the holistic cure to all of this, right? It is the start to the work. Um what I would say is this is also the result of us making it an opt-in process, right? If we would have, if we would have said, board, uh choose schools.
Yeah.
Based on, on whatever you'd like, then then we probably could have cherry picked um things a little differently. Uh but there's no, there's no saying that those schools that we would have picked had any interest in this. And so it really is that, that. Or passion, exactly. The district's saying, um you have interest and passion in this, and we believe in you, and we're gonna take you wherever you are. Uh and we're gonna, we're gonna move you as far forward as possible each and every year. Um and so that, that really is, I think Dr. Gledich uh summarized it beautifully, that is my work. Now is, is to take these schools as their EDSL. And and do a needs assessment and say, hey, we know that we're gonna have to address some gaps at, at every one of these schools. Regardless of their five E data or their academic data, there's going to be gaps that we have to address to implement these programs at a really high quality level. Uh and so know that, that that's the full commitment um to this, and some of the schools' needs are, are, are bigger and shinier right now than others. And that just means that we have to, I have to focus more of my time and attention to, to address that, so that the foundation is there. But I, I do hear you clearly.
I think it's worth noting too, they have the one plan coming up where they will focus on their needs. And then they have another one plan as they enter into that each pathway, they can go to category. So as has been observed, they have a year to prepare and and focus on things and and exercise for it. And I think as they come together, it's been noted too, that just bringing. That collaboration together, I I personally think it's a positive thing for these schools, that they can really run with these ideas, so.
Creates energy.
Yes.
Yeah, creates energy, that creates opportunities to collaborate.
Just to summarize, uh based on the discussion here, and you've heard different viewpoints from different board members. And what David also talked about, how we look at this data developmental, it's not judgmental. So from that perspective. We look at this data, how can we develop these schools and put them in the right. Framework or right support that they need a year from now, when this program is going to be up and running. So it's good that we have that uh planning year, developmental year for them, and data shows what it is, and. Brandon, you are aware of the data, so that's part of your job now with EDSL to figure out. How this translates into school, and those schools are adequately prepared going forward. So I'm fully confident that. All you guys will support the schools, the good schools that where things are working, we continue doing those good things. And some of the challenges that we face, that we provide the supports based on the perspective that it's developmental, not. Okay? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
If I may, if I may, just one piece, um the parent survey um is coming in the Friday night note this week, so the results there.
Parent survey.
Parent survey results.
Okay, five.
Yeah, um I had trouble with the formatting, so I wanted to give.
And and this uh five essentials, it's not, we don't have the data just for one year. Now we have data for three years. And three years, you can spot a trend out there if something is working or something is not working, so. That's what the data is for, we make the decisions based on that, so. Uh with that, we are done for the evening. I just want to quickly, um, thank you for all the staff to for participation and. Couple of other items I want to address to the board specifically. Are you guys completely um. Informed about what we have coming up on Saturday as far as the superintendent search process? I sent an email, any uh questions regarding that, we meet at eight forty-five here. And then nine o'clock is the first interview down there, so we possibly be here on time at eight forty-five. So that we can finish this process, transition down there and have that set up, ready to go. And then the rest of the morning uh to finish that, I think. Second thing I want to um remind the board that there is only about three weeks of school left. So I highly encourage the schools that you haven't still visited. Um that you have been assigned to, if you can visit the school and then, visit the schools in the next three weeks. And if you cannot, for some personal reasons, please let Director Jorgensen know, and we will try to. Cover the schools that you cannot uh visit in the next three weeks. That was a board priority and a commitment. And I'm hoping that we can fulfill that commitment to our uh, your community. Uh Jason, you brought about at the last board meeting about recognizing staff members. And we said that we'll talk about it at the work session, is there anything you want to add to that? Um, staff members who were employed for twenty-five or thirty years or something like that.
I mean, maybe if we wanted to look at. The timeframe of, you know, having time on our schedules to be able to do something, this is gonna be too crazy now. But it might be nice if we somehow had. A list that we could read off as like a.
And I have that list.
A word of, here's our twenty to twenty-five years of dedication to the district, or twenty-five to thirty years, and just, you know, recognizing them. And even if we did something, I'm just brainstorming here, where we had, you know, like we had on election day, where we had little desserts and stuff out there. We've, we, the people wanted, that were recognizing wanted to come, we, we, they could standing recognize in the audience, and then we could have a little dessert reception. We, we, they could standing recognize in the audience, and then we could have a little dessert reception or something like that, just to celebrate them. Uh is a simple, it's, that's in my mind, not good enough to say, you know, but it may be something with our timeframe given. Just say, hey, thanks, and we've got some treats out here, and, you know, shake hands and tell me one of your best stories, and I don't know, something like that, so. Just a thought, so.
Any thoughts on that from the board? The only thing that I would add is that when you look at the twenty-year list, that's pretty big.
Yeah.
Okay, we, we are talking about even at the ESP level.
Well, again, maybe then you look.
Then if you go to the thirty-year list, it's drops down to ten. Okay, thirty plus.
Yeah, maybe that's our benchmark. I don't know, twenty-five is.
Something, you know, cuz I like, when, when last time I got off a board, I know they do now, I know Dr. Hey, well, I think Dr. Gledge did, and I still have it. Um when I left, he gave you a belt, the, the, the school belt.
That's cool, the school board members.
Yeah, yeah, I'm saying, but in, in another word, give them something, I, I understand that, that, that's, um, I don't, I don't know what I'm saying. I use it when I'm hungry and I tell my wife, no, no.
Is there any interest, um?
I mean, maybe the thirty-year benchmark or twenty-five-year benchmark would, so we're not reading two hundred names, or, you know?
Yeah. So you want to read that from the board, yes, and?
That's just my thought, I'm one of seven. So, you know, I, I will, I do wanna be mindful of the will of the board too, so.
Do we still get the pins, Sherry?
For the ESP we do, I don't know about.
Phoebe would know for sure.
ESP does. I would say.
And all staff years ago, um five-year, ten-year, fifteen-year, twenty-five-year, and thirty-year pins, remember?
I have a twenty, but I don't have a twenty-five.
You have a twenty, so.
Sherry needs a twenty-five.
I do.
Would, I'll ask, would you like me to ask Phoebe if we do that, and we'll look into that?
I, I really, it's a short turnaround, but even just something like that with a, a dessert reception, I don't know.
I wanna make sure that's the will of the board.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm.
Please, you're okay with that?
I, I think it's a nice gesture.
I, I think it would be thoughtful and maybe build the culture nicely, um and let people know we appreciate them. I do, again, finances, who's paying for it, you know?
Who's organizing it?
Who's organizing it?
I think, I think in five hundred million, we can buy a lot of it.
That's always the person that comes up, and we've managed to overcome those barriers with the cookie, with the ice cream social, with everything else, and we'll find a way to overcome these barriers. If there is a will in recognizing our staff, we will find a way.
It's about what we prioritize.
Yeah. So if anybody, you have any thoughts on that or no?
I like it.
Okay. Any thoughts on that? No? Okay.
With twenty-five-year mark and above.
I would even, depending upon the number of people, maybe it's even thirty-year and above.
Okay.
Because of twenty-five, it could be like hundred and fifty people, and that would be too much. Okay? So thirty and above at ESP level, it's only ten right now. And once we catch up on that, maybe next year we can go down to twenty-five and above, something.
With a little more planning for next year, okay? Maybe the thirty-year mark, just celebrate those.
We'll pursue looking into it. Would you be able to provide some feedback on that?
I just sent Phoebe a text, I probably will have an answer by the time I get home.
Okay. Thank you, guys, that's all, and we conclude our, end our work session at seven twenty. I think there is still some food if people want some things.